Good evening, Holliston. Welcome to the Select Board's meeting for Tuesday, September 29, 2020. We're meeting Tuesday evening in observance of yesterday's religious holiday. We have a full agenda this evening. Starting off, we will be hearing from our state Representative Carolyn Dykema and State Senator Karen Spilker on the status of the state budget. As some folks know, the pandemic has led to the state legislature deferring action on its annual General Appropriations Act. We've been very lucky as a community to have so active and engaged legislators. They have joined us at least twice in the last six months to give us updates on Beacon Hill, what's going on financially. And this evening, both of them join us, and I want to thank them very much for doing so. Before we engage the legislators, if we could invite our Finance Committee, who is joining us tonight, to join our meeting. And Ken, if you'd like, you could begin by opening your meeting and taking a roll call to officially convene.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Cronin. Before I begin, I guess I have to read this because we're meeting virtually.
Correct.
So let me just say that pursuant to the Governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open being law, general law, Chapter 30A, Paragraph 20, as well as the Select Board's emergency order dated March 16, 2020, the Finance Committee will be using remote participation for this meeting. The audio of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the town's webpage within 24 hours in accordance with the Governor's emergency action requirement of keeping the public informed of actions during this meeting. I would ask that all participants remotely attending this meeting and our follow-on meeting when we break out from the Select Board, please state your name for identification purposes each time you speak throughout the meeting. At this time, I'll take a roll call, a quick roll call of attendance of the Finance Committee. Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Alfred?
Here.
Ms. Zimer?
Here.
And I'm here, and I don't believe we have any other members.
Where's Mark?
Oh, where's Mark? Oh, there he is, okay. Mr. Whitaker?
Here. Thank you for the call.
He's here. The Finance Committee has now officially convened it. Just before we begin, I just want to point out for the Finance Committee that after we're done with the legislative update, we will split up into our own Zoom Zooms as we speak. So thank you very much, Mr. Cronin. We're all set.
Great, thank you, Ken. This evening, we expect some activity associated with our meeting. We'd ask any attendees on the Zoom to virtually raise their hand or otherwise show some interest in joining the conversation. Our host, Chris Mayo, will be happy to bring you into the conversation. So I think people understand the rules by now, but we wanted to make that announcement upfront to make sure things are good and orderly. Without any delay, I would very much like to give a warm welcome to Senator Spilker, Representative Dykema, to this evening's meeting to welcome any impact, excuse me, updates on the state budget process as it affects both Holliston and the state at large. Senator, I'll give you the floor first. Good evening. I believe you might be muted, Karen.
Okay, I think I'm off now. Thank you. It's great to be here again with all of us, all of you. Thank you for inviting us to speak tonight about the state budget. It's always a pleasure to come speak before the Select Board, and it's great to have the Finance Committee here as well. It's always a pleasure to be working with my friends and colleagues, Rep. Dykema, and I want to thank you. Thank you all. It's great to have some new faces as well. Travis, welcome. I know we haven't met under the circumstances, but I do want to mention you're coming from the MWRA. We have something in common. I worked there many, many years ago, and it's great to see you, John, Tina, and Ben. So I'd like to welcome you, and I look forward to working with all of you. I'd also like to take a moment to thank Chief Cassidy, Chief Stone, and all of our frontline workers on your efforts to mitigate the impact of COVID-19 and your terrific effort. Concerning local aid, as we know, communities are dealing with uncertainty given our current global pandemic. Anxiety is up. I hear it all the time from individuals, from municipalities, from organizations, especially with so many unknowns about the trajectory of the virus and therefore our economy. I know how important certainty is for local communities so that you can plan your budgets with respect to education, public health, public safety, and all of the things that you need to do, set a tax rate, et cetera, before going into town meeting. And that's why I worked very closely and pushed hard, working with the Governor and the Speaker, to pass a local aid joint agreement last July. So with that, you can count on, even though the state does not, we do not have a full budget, we recognize the importance of certainty in our municipalities. So what we did was, for fiscal year '21, the baseline Holliston local aid is the same as fiscal year '20. So for Chapter 70, Holliston will receive $7,936,216. For the unrestricted general growth assistance, Holliston will receive the same as fiscal year '20, which is $1,644,407. This is what you can count and put together your own local budget on. These local aid numbers, I want to stress, are not double counting. They are separate and distinct from the CARES Act funding that Holliston should be receiving, and we're hoping for another round of stimulus funding from the Feds. Holliston's allocation for the coronavirus, the CARES Act that happened several months ago, is based on community's population share, so it would be $1.3 million. And as you know, and I think Holliston has already submitted the claims, you've been ahead of the curve, congratulations in submitting the paperwork and the necessary documentation to collect the $1.3 million, which is a lot for getting the schools ready for, you know, for, and the town ready for what it needs to do to fight the COVID-19, the virus. On top of that, Holliston was eligible for a grant for $604,575 through the Department of Early and Secondary Education School Reopening Grant Program. That's distributed on a 225-per-pupil basis, and communities must apply on a month-to-month basis. And the Department of Early and Secondary Education is currently in the process of approving grants. So communities like Holliston can apply and draw down their grant through December. On top of that, Holliston Public Schools was allocated $54,847 through the Elementary and Secondary Education Emergency Relief Fund. That's distributed based on the federal Title I formula. So it's for low-income students, and I know Holliston has already applied for that as well. So just to give you an idea, so Holliston has the information, I believe, with its unrestricted local aid and its education aid. Hopefully, we will get more. But the Senate and the House, in the end of July, we extended the current session for limited purposes. You know, currently, the state budget's been delayed, as you know. We are waiting on certain factors.
Chris. Hang on one second, Karen. I think we're having some audio difficulties.
You need to unmute yourself.
You may need to unmute yourself, Senator.
Yeah, I just did. Somebody muted me.
Oh, you're back. You're back.
I don't know if that's a hint or...
Not here.
Not the Oscars.
Please.
So, you know, we've extended the current session because we don't know what our full revenue collections will be. Our unemployment rate has gone from 16% to almost 12%, so at least, you know, that looks promising. We don't know the trajectory of the virus. That is really important. Are we going to have a surge during the fall? How, if so, how will that hit our economy here in Massachusetts? And the third factor, which is critically important, which I'm sure all of you know, we have no idea at this point what the federal government is doing. We need relief. It really, though, is dependent a lot upon what the Feds do in terms of us putting together a budget, but we will have a full-year budget. Right now, the last budget we did was an interim carrying us through the end of October, and we are looking at variables. We have options as a state. We're hoping, as I said, we get some federal dollars. And I'll just give you an example of the range of federal dollars that we could possibly, hopefully, get in some cases. The U.S. House passed the HEROES Act, they call it the HEROES Act, a while back. They're doing another one this week that might be a little bit less. But if something like the HEROES Act passed, Massachusetts alone would get 800, there would be $875 billion in state support and local support. We would get approximately $10 billion. We are estimating our deficit for this year is $5 billion. So if we got, if the HEROES Act passed, not only would it help us out for fiscal '21, but it would help us with '22, which we are also concerned about. The last Senate package had $0 in state and municipal support. The Problem Solvers Caucus, which did a different package, did $500 billion in state and local support. And so we don't know. We're hoping that we get some funding in state and federal support, but we just don't know how much. You know, there are other factors. We have a very healthy rainy day fund or stabilization fund. It's the highest it's ever been. It's chair of Ways and Means. I worked hard to put money, sock it away in there because we knew it was going to rain. So we have $3.4 billion, but we can't use it all up in one year because fiscal '22 is going to be a tough year. We will, just for you to be aware, on October 7, the House Ways and Means, Senate Ways and Means, and the Secretary of Administration and Finance will be holding another economic roundtable to hear from the experts, what they feel, they see happening with the federal stimulus, with our own budget, and to give us some advice and counsel. The administration's required to certify revenues by October 15, and they will be, they may be filing another budget, a revised budget from what they did last January. We're not, we're not certain. So I think that there are a lot of different factors to see as to what would happen, but at this point, you know, we have a budget, a state budget through the end of October. We will make sure that eventually we will have a full state budget, but we recognize that the municipalities, our school districts desperately needed certainty, and that's why we did the local aid agreement coupled with the other federal dollars that the town got. Hopefully, that will help make a difference for this year. If we get a lot more money, you know, then we will be, which, you know, that would be the best of all worlds, then we will certainly be able to do a little bit more, but that's not certain. So that's, you know, from my perspective, where the state of the state budget is right now.
Senator, thank you so much for that very comprehensive update. I think if it's okay with you, we'll move to Representative Dykema, and maybe if you can hang on.
Certainly.
We might have a couple of questions for you, not too many.
Certainly. And I will put it on mute.
Thank you. Representative Dykema, good evening. How are you?
Good evening, John, and the rest of the board and the Finance Committee. It's great to see everyone, and I guess I first want to start off by saying I appreciate the opportunity to be here and just commend the whole team at the town. I think we all recognize that the resiliency that all of you have really, you know, shown a great example of in meeting the challenges of COVID is quite remarkable, and I continue to be amazed at how all of you on the front lines dealing with these issues in town are able to respond and really turn on the dime as new information comes fast and furious, including these budget updates, and be able to kind of respond in real time to some of these challenges. And I want to recognize Stacey Raffey, of course, from the School Committee. We know that the schools are a huge part of recovery and response to COVID, and the schools have really been faced with daunting challenges that they have stepped up to and continue to face every day. So I want to thank you and your team for that, Stacey. So, you know, the Senator obviously gave an incredibly comprehensive update on the budget situation at the state level. I don't remember exactly when we were here last, but clearly you can tell that there's a lot of happening, a lot happening, and there's a lot of information flow at the State House continually. But I guess the takeaway is that there are certainly as many unknowns, I think, now as there were last time we presented before you with the notable, I guess, issue that we had expected by this point to have a better sense of what the federal funding would be. And originally, we were talking, and I think the Senator and I were both saying that there was, in July, we were expecting to have a good sense of what that federal picture would look like. And I think we all know that for many forces well beyond the control of anyone in Massachusetts, it's not clear, you know, the House has clearly put a clear marker in the ground around what they're hoping to do with the next round of federal funding, but it still seems unclear, and I've heard anything from, you know, the end of the year to potentially early January...
You're on mute. I'm going to start with you for questions.
...for the feds to come to any kind of agreement on what they might do. And I guess, you know, there's always an outside chance that nothing will be able to be done. And so, of course, we, as a state, have to plan, as you do, at the town level for all of these possible contingencies and recognize that, you know, one of the scenarios or part of the discussion may have to be, depending on the economic realities, cuts similar to maybe what we saw back in the Great Recession. You know, I think all of us hope that it wouldn't have to come to that, but obviously, clearly a possibility. I want to underscore what the Senator said about the work, you know, the partnership between the House and the Senate over years to build back that rainy day fund, which had been depleted to under $1 billion there due to recession needs, and really was built up in a pretty short period of time back to $3.5 billion, which will serve us well because it's certainly raining. The other thing that I would just underscore is that, you know, recognizing that the town not only is faced with the same revenue challenges that we are, but the costs are increasing all across the board. And so the hope is that the federal funding that came from the CARES Acts originally, which came to the town, which the Senator had mentioned, was over $1 million, would go to meeting some of those needs. And I want to just give credit to a Select Board member, Cronin, who I remember at the very beginning of this was talking about putting codes in the town's computer to be able to easily catalog and keep track of COVID-related expenses so that reimbursements could be very quickly submitted and hopefully get that funding back. So all of that planning will clearly serve the town well, and I just want to recognize your leadership and look forward to continuing this partnership and, of course, working with the Senate and her important role in the Senate because communication among the three branches, the House, Senate, and the Governor's Office, is going to be incredibly important as we put forward a thoughtful budget that meets all of the needs in what will likely need to be a pretty quick timeframe. So after that October 7 roundtable meeting, where we're going to hear from economists again about what the projections are, hopefully, we'll have a little more certainty than we did back in the spring. And then hopefully sometime here in the near future, we can put a stake in the ground with either another short-term budget or hopefully even potentially a budget for the remainder of the year. But we'll certainly, you know, keep in touch with you constantly as we have to make sure that you have as much information as we do. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Representative Dykema, for the kind words. I want to recognize Chairwoman Stacey Raffey from the School Committee is on our call. I just got a text, and she wanted me to extend her best wishes to both of you and thanks for all your support on behalf of the Holliston Public Schools. So duly done. So at this point, if you don't mind, I'm going to turn to some members of our board to ask a few questions, not too many, as I said, just enough to maybe clarify some issues and gain some more insights. We'll start with you, Ben, if you'd like some questions, please.
Sure. First, just reiterate, thank you very much for coming. Thank you for your time and all the hard work you're doing on the Hill to help Holliston every day. So I'll just go right to it. I think the major question that I have at this point is just sort of like for timing. I'm just trying to understand, and either Carolyn, Karen, either one of you can answer this, but I'm just trying to understand, you talked about the meeting on the 7th from the Economic Roundtable and certifying revenues on the 15th of October. Is your expectation, if the federal government does not provide any relief package, that we would do another interim budget for the next few months and sort of see how things go in three months? Is that kind of where we're leaning?
Yeah, I think we'll have to see if we don't, so much of what we do is dependent upon having the information we need. If we do not have a feeling of what the federal government, the knowledge of what the revenues might be coming in from the federal government, that could be an option, and then we would work on a long-term budget. But it's not certain yet as to exactly which course we would go. And the two Chairs of Ways and Means, the House Chair Ways and Means, the Senate Chair Ways and Means, are meeting every single Monday in the morning to talk about budget to work out because this is going to be a different process than ever before, probably in the history of the Commonwealth, not just, you know, during our time, but it's going to be a different process, and they'll work out a timetable. So it's very possible, but I can't say for sure.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Senator. Tina?
Sure, and I forgive the Chair. I feel like this is staging on a regular basis to somehow block me, but I'm not going to take it personally. So hopefully you can hear my voice rather than see my face here. I first want to thank you for continually calling on the federal government for an ongoing response. We really appreciate your leadership and know, thank you, Travis, know that it'll make a difference for Holliston and the state of Massachusetts. And then second, I personally want to thank you both for your advocacy for the mental health issues that we know are going to be staying with every community in the state as a result of the pandemic. So again, thank you for your advocacy and your constant raising of the awareness of the mental health issues that will result and are resulting from the pandemic. My question is just to ask for your thoughts as we enter into, in the coming months, the FY22 budgeting process. I would like to hear your thoughts, your considerations, or rather, your thoughts rather, on what Holliston should be considering as we enter into the FY22 budget process.
Carolyn, do you want to take that first or...
Sure. You know, I guess, Tina, thank you for the question. It's a great question. I think there are so many uncertainties. The one thing that we all can definitely prepare for is uncertainty, right? So we're coping with it, you know, we know the towns are coping with it as well. I think I would, I would say going forward, and I would, you know, welcome the Senator's perspective on this as well, but from where I'm sitting, this looks clearly to be not just an economic impact to fiscal year 2020, you know, '21. I think we are very likely to see extended impacts of this in some shape or form. It's unclear to what extent those will occur, but, you know, I would say almost certainly some impact in fiscal year 2022, and I've even heard some economists saying that potentially, you know, into 2023. So the hope, and I think one of the, you know, one of the reasons why our schools are so important and our daycares are so important is because so much of our economic activity is really reliant, as we're finding, on the ability for parents to go back to work, which means getting kids back to school and kids back into daycare safely. So that's a really important piece of this. But again, I'm not sure that we can be any more specific than that, Tina, other than to say, you know, be prepared for uncertainty, and I just keep the resilient attitude that I think you all have had and just be able to adjust and adapt as best we all can, working together.
Thank you.
Senator, anything to add on that?
No, I would agree with Carolyn and say that as we look at the budget, we are looking at at least a two-year issue. '22 could be worse than '21 if we just get some funds for '21. That is why it's really critically important that we save some of our rainy day fund. We cannot use it all up in 2021. We will most likely need some of it in 2022 and possibly beyond. And Mr. Chair, if you would indulge me just for one moment...
Of course.
...to respond to Member Hein's comments on mental health, I can't help but take this opportunity to say that, starting tomorrow, there will be a research-backed public information, public awareness campaign, starting with social media tomorrow, we're unveiling it tomorrow, actually, and then in December, it will be on TV. Basically, it's focused on reducing the stigma and normalizing conversations about mental and behavioral health, particularly for emerging adults aged 15 to 26. We know that school-aged children, particularly those years, their anxiety, their depression has gone up so much during the pandemic. It can be one out of five even before the pandemic, but it's gone up even higher. And the whole idea will be to deliver some tactical advice on how to engage in initial conversations with loved ones struggling and to help people to recognize the signs that something might be wrong. We can all ask, and the whole idea is to ask, listen, encourage, and check in, to support folks. That's the key message, that words can hide what we're really feeling, and there often is more to the story, and that is actually the theme. You will see taglines on social media and hopefully in the near future on TV with the tagline, more to the story. So keep track of that, and if you feel comfortable, you know, continue to spread it if you want some of the, it'll be on social media, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and all the other ones that I'm not even aware of at this point. So, and then, as I said, on TV, it's something that we feel particularly during, it was important pre-COVID, it's even more important now.
Thank you very much for that.
Outstanding update. Thank you, Senator. I just have a couple of questions, and then if you don't mind, I'm getting notice that some members of our Finance Committee may have some as well. I'll turn it over to them in just a moment. Two questions. First, it's more of a statement. I wanted to emphasize how critical the CARES Act was to our community's handling of pandemic. Specifically, from the outset, we knew we were going to be incurring costs to reopen government. While we didn't spend a ton of money at the front end, access to that funding was critical. It allowed us to preemptively plan and prepare workplaces for safe reentry. Over the summer, as you know, the schools entered the picture, and they started their plan. You mentioned the D.C. Money, Senator Spilker. I just want to emphasize, we couldn't have done anything remotely close to what we've been able to achieve without that kind of money. And not to sound like a "what have you done for me lately" person, but I will say that without the funding after December 31, I'm afraid hitting that switch is really going to undo a fair amount of work that we've done to date. I know you cannot give us the assurances of that funding in 2021, but I want you to know through us that it's critical. We've had conversations with the schools, the superintendent, and the chairwoman about the challenges that they're likely going to encounter through staffing and possible remote learning capabilities. There are so many unknowns that affect such a large portion of our population. The CARES Act gives us the flexibility to address that and respond. It's critical. And so first, thank you, and hopefully through your help and through Congress's help, we can see some relief in 2021. It is... and through Congress's help, we can see some relief in 2021. It is critical. That is the secret solution, if you will, to allowing us to try to maintain some semblance of governance and certainly in our schools. So I know you know that, but to hear it from us, it was critical. We couldn't have done what we've done without it. I wanted to get a guess, Senator Spilka, I guess I'll turn to you first, on the best guess you might have on a budget timeline. Knowing we have a federal election, we've got some congressional blocks going on, if we're waiting for federal relief, how long can we wait?
That's a very good question. In fact, that is probably a $5 billion question. You know, this is a balance. If, we will know more either before, well, by the time the election occurs, we'll have a better idea as to what happens. We'll start getting more information. We've been collating and getting more information over these last few weeks. We'll have the October 7th Economic Summit to hear from folks. We'll be meeting with A&amp;F and the governor's people, the House and Senate. But we will also know more after the election. If the feds have not done anything with a stimulus package, a second one before that, we'll have a better idea as to how to interpret that with the election. So, you know, there are people that are saying we can hold out for months. I'm not so certain. Eventually, we are going to need to do a full-year budget. We need to have an idea. Again, we have options before us, but, you know, we don't want to start going down the path of one option if we're going to end up getting a decent amount in the federal stimulus. But I do want to emphasize that the numbers that I mentioned, that I cited just a few minutes ago, for Holliston's baseline fiscal '21 aid being the same as '20, you can take that to the bank. You will be getting that funding. And we did not do that with anything else at this point in time, other than Chapter 70 and local aid assistance, the unrestricted general growth aid. So you can bank on receiving the same as fiscal year '20.
Rep Dykema, do you have anything to add to that?
I don't, John. You know, they've really covered it.
Okay. In the interest of time, I'd like to ask our colleagues on the Finance Committee if they have any questions. Ken, I'll start with you if you'd like to begin.
Yeah, first, I just want to say, of course, thank you to Karen and Carolyn for all their help. They have been tremendous. But I also wanted to do a special shout out to my favorite ally in the senator's office, which is Pooja, because Pooja is my primary conduit to get information, and she's always been extremely responsive and helpful. So I want to make sure she gets some credit for the job she does helping us as well. But-
Here, in case there are any other questions.
Yes, I saw her, and I know she's going to email me afterwards and get mad at me for the question I'm about to ask, because I've been asking her about it for months. Obviously, what you both conveyed was very helpful. But as the finance guy, I'm concerned. And the concern I have is very simple. I went to the meeting in April, the last revenue forecast meeting, where the consensus was pretty universal that we were going to see a revenue shortfall anywhere between, I think the low number was like 2.8 billion, the high number was six, and the consensus was it was going to be closer to six than 2.8 coming out of that meeting. And you've heard many people since then say 6 billion is about what's expected. The concern I have is that while I definitely appreciate the guidance that local aid will stay the same, I haven't, on my own, been able to reconcile the numbers in a way that works unless we get federal aid. In other words, our rainy day fund you said, Karen, was 3.4 billion. Obviously, I agree, we don't want to use it all this year. But if we face a $6 billion revenue shortfall, even if we use the entire thing, there's 2.6 billion that has to come from somewhere. And while it doesn't have to come from local aid, that's a big chunk of money, right? That's close to 10% of the budget. So while I hope that local aid stays the same, and I do want to bank on it, I'm concerned because I think that that promise may be married to future federal aid being guaranteed. And to Mr. Cronin's question about, about, well, how long do you have? Can you speak to that? If there is no federal aid, do you still expect, how would you close a two, you know, and again, a minus for specifics, just kind of, you know, is it really true that you globally would be completely off the table even if the feds don't come through with any additional funds?
What will be completely off the table? Cutting local aid, or?
Yeah.
Oh, yes. We have given our commitment to Senate, the House, and the governor. You don't get much, much better than that in this business. We have given our commitment, we will figure out. And again, it was done because we knew, we all knew, that municipalities needed to get their affairs in order. There are other options. I mean, you know, there are other sources of revenue. For example, there's something called accelerated sales tax that we have been talking, that would take in a few hundred million. And I realize that 5 billion, 4 billion, even 300 million seems like a drop in the bucket. But there are, we have been talking about this for months. We have other ways and other ideas. And, you know, there's a lot of different, there are several different ways to get to where we will need to get to. And I'm not certain the exact balance of what we will do, but we will get there. We need to have a balanced budget, and we need to get it done, I would say, hopefully, before this year is out, this calendar year, not the fiscal year.
I don't know, Carolyn, just, Carolyn, feel free to chime in if you want to. I don't know if you want to, but Karen handled all these questions, or, you know.
No, I mean, you know, Karen is obviously intimately involved in some of the planning and strategy on this. I guess, you know, to be overly simplistic, there are a limited number of ways that the state can deal with a gap, the size of the gap that we're looking at right now. You know, we've got a rainy day fund, which is healthy, thankfully. One of the ways you can deal with a revenue shortfall is cuts, you know, and to your point, you know, this commitment to local aid is substantial part of the budget. Those cuts would be, you know, potentially deep, absent any federal aid to fill that gap. Or on the other side of the ledger is some kind of revenue increase, right, to create new revenue somehow, to be able to backfill some of that, or any combination thereof, right, of cuts, revenue, and the rainy day fund. So I guess at this point, you know, I mean, I think what you're hearing is that the federal piece is still something we're very much hoping for, and hoping for sooner than later. And I think we still, you know, want that, and we're certainly advocating for that. But in terms of going forward, I think, you know, what the senator has said, is in terms of local aid and those things that directly impact communities, the state is committed to meeting that obligation to you to ensure that you can do your business, and then we will have to figure out, you know, how we deal with the rest of us. But hoping that that level of certainty gives you some ability to plan.
And the one follow-on to that was, I know it's early, but FY22, right? And the only reason I'm asking about this is not because I expect to have any numbers on FY22 at this point. But to the point you both just made about, okay, well, there's federal aid and there are ways we can patch things together. And I agree, right? I think you could meet that commitment, you know, absent federal aid, if you took some drastic actions elsewhere and so forth. But then, that then leads to, okay, well, where do we end up in FY22? And I'm not trying to be a doomsday, you know, like talk about doomsday here. It's more just the reality of the drop in money, right? It's like, it's like you can, you know, it's kind of like if you're unemployed and you have some savings and you can keep living the same life you lived for some time period after that, but eventually that money runs out, and you have to take corrective action, or you'll find another job, or whatever. And so the only reason I'm kind of bringing up this kind of other side to it is because as the finance guy, I'm nervous. And while I appreciate the commitment, and I'm glad that you're standing by that commitment, I also know that the numbers have to add up. And so if they don't add up, if you make them add up this year by taking drastic actions or the feds don't come through, then odds are we're just pushing the problem off till FY22. So I just wanted to temper that, because I don't want people to watch this meeting and think that, okay, everything's just going to be smooth forever. You know, hopefully it will be, but there's still so much uncertainty out there. We don't know, as you said, Karen at the beginning, don't know about the virus, don't know about any of these things. So, you know, I don't want to make it sound like we're sure that there won't be pain at some point. It's just that you're saying at the moment, we don't see booking pain in FY21.
Ken, at this point, maybe in the interest of time, if we could pass along some questions that I think you mentioned other members of your committee might have.
Yes, go ahead.
Do you have the direction on who has their hand up, or Dan?
Yeah, Dan has his hand up.
Hi, Dan, go ahead.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Senator and Representative, for being here and for all the hard work you guys have all been doing at state level, as far as we've been working here at the local level. I'm sure you've been doing it tenfold. So, but just to sort of follow on on Ken's comments, I too am sort of concerned. I mean, I think that you guys are, the heart is in the right place, but sometimes, you know, the reality sometimes catches up with the heart if certain things don't come out. And look, I mean, you know, if great things happen on November 3rd, I mean, I think that, you know, we all realize that we'll probably be okay. But, you know, if not, you know, so your commitment to local aid, I mean, is that also a commitment to not propose any, have any, I mean, this is always more the government proposing 9C cuts or any other kind of things later on in the year? Or is it, I mean, is that sort of like off the table for 2021?
As I said, the agreement, the local aid agreement is among the Senate, the House, and the governor. We made a joint announcement on this as an agreement. We worked long and hard on this to come to an agreement and have something that we could all support. So, I mean, I can't speak for the governor, but it's very unlikely there would be 9C. And generally, if there are 9C cuts, that happens in October, November. You know, I just want to say that there are several options to meet. First of all, under our Constitution, Massachusetts must have a balanced budget. We will have a budget, and it will be balanced. And for fiscal 2021, it will level fund local aid and Chapter 70. In fact, with Chapter 70, we added $107 million to make sure that we address the inflation factor and for those communities that were having high growth in enrollment, so they would not suffer. On top of it was the federal dollars that were for COVID and for other things. So I can say that that will be in our final budget. The numbers that I gave you for Holliston will be what Holliston will receive for fiscal '21. '22, I can't answer. We don't know what's going to happen, but as I said, you know, again, it'll need to be balanced, and we're saving, I would hope we are saving some of our rainy day fund or state fund for it. But we, you know, if you remember, I was in the legislature in 2010 when we hit the recession, 2011, 2010, whenever it was there. And the way that we got through it, there were some cuts. We did, I think it was a third cut, a third reform, and a third revenue. So, and there are other tools, you know, there's solves, as I mentioned. It's not an increase in taxes, doing the accelerated sales tax. It just changes when it's collected for one year. So there are ways to, you know, increase revenue in various ways that we have available to us. And, you know, I just, I mean, I also am concerned about the budget, clearly, because of the consequences and so many, you know, what people are counting on, on our services and our programs. But in terms of local aid, I can, I feel comfortable in saying that you will get what I mentioned and what, you know, we agreed upon, and we will do as best as we can for 2022 to keep it as close to that. Hopefully, our economy will be better. You know, our unemployment rate seems to be decreasing. Our economy is doing better, knock on wood. So, you know, again, it causes us all anxiety, believe me. But you have to go on the best information you have, and that's why we're waiting a little bit longer to see what the factors will be, and then we will take action.
Thank you.
Just one quick follow-up, if I might.
Sure, go ahead.
Maybe just a bit of advice from you, if any. Holliston, you know, we, we're not certainly unique, but we're certainly in a better financial position than many other states, than many other municipalities in the state. We were able to put together a budget for next year that really, you know, were actually embedded pretty significant cuts in local aid, because we were able to do it before you came out with the level funding of local aid. And so, you know, we used a little bit of reserve, but we probably will put that back with free cash. So we'll potentially have some extra money, I guess, you know, not extra money, I don't want anyone to think that there's tons of extra money. But as we start our planning process for the fiscal year 2022 budget, would you recommend maybe looking at that, sort of, saving some of that for use in 2022?
I always recommend saving. Prior Chair Ways and Means, you know, I really helped sock away a lot of funds because, in the rainy day fund, where, you know, you know eventually it's going to be raining. And unfortunately, you know, at times, it pours, and better to have it and hold on to it. It pains me to have to even think about taking it out. I've become, you know, wanting it to stay in there, but that's what it's for. Just like cities and towns, just like families. You hope families have some savings for hard times to help get them through as well.
Yeah, we're just, we could be able to do this and not make any recommendations on any short changes in employment or hours. It's like we didn't have to do any actions on that. So, you know, it was a good outcome, given the sort of the expectations, so.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
No worries. Thanks, Dan. Any other questions from the Finance Committee this evening? Hearing none. As we wrap up, just a couple of points, Senator, Representative. First, I want to thank you both for your assistance on another item. The town of Holliston, as you probably know, is engaged in significant traffic impact issues. We've been dealing with neighborhood concerns, office park issues, to say the least. Both of you, I want to recognize, as being instrumental and helpful to bring state attention to some of these issues, specifically Rep Dykema. You've been helping a lot with Mastot. And also, Senator, Dennis has been a tremendous help. We met with Mastot yesterday in our first mini-meeting, if you will, to immerse them in our issues. We look forward to meeting again with Mastot, bringing Dennis, Rep Dykema, yourself, obviously, Senator, if you want to come out to Holliston sometime in the next month. I think when you see, put eyes on the concerns that neighborhoods have about commercial traffic, the impact it's having on our community, it really does present a tremendous problem that I know we're going to need some state assistance with. So before I let you go tonight, I first wanted to thank you again for your help. It is really, really appreciated and very helpful. The Mastot people were very responsive. We look forward to seeing them again, as well as hopefully yourselves, in the next month or so. Before I let you go, question. About three or four months ago, the triboards in Holliston signed a letter to our congressional, was it the congressional delegation?
Congressional delegation.
Or requesting some consideration of CARES funding, extensions, and so forth. Is there anything more we can do, in your opinion, as a community, to help leverage what you're trying to do on our behalf? you're trying to do on our behalf?
I guess I would just, John, I would say continue the advocacy. You know, I think it's important that we know that the Senate plays a huge role in this conversation. In addition to Congress, the House has kind of been out in front on, on higher dollars than the Senate has been. Make sure to provide, especially the senators, with as much concrete information as you can about the impacts to the town, day to day, and why this funding is needed and how it's gonna, you know, it's absolutely needed to protect health, safety, economy here in Massachusetts and just kind of have a drumbeat of that, that information. And then those stories that the senators can go and tell on the Senate floor when they're trying to convince their colleagues about why this money is needed and sooner than later, the importance of the timing of it as well.
And I would just like to add two things. First of all, for those listening, I know all of you that are, you know, here, but for the general public, the references to the U.S. Senate, not the state senate. We know how important the funding is. Sorry Karen, I should have, you know. We know that our, our Massachusetts senate is getting strong with us, absolutely. Just want to make it, make it clear. But, you know, I would also, it can't hurt if you're gonna get together another letter to just highlight the specific areas, I mean, to really say that you need, the cities and towns need funding, but they need some flexible funding. In the CARES Act, they made it so inflexible that there are some communities that are not going to be able to access all of their funding because of the contingencies and strings that were put on it. So, flexible funding and specifically for the areas that you needed for education, for public safety, for public health, et cetera, you know, to really just, it doesn't have to go into depth, but at least to highlight some of the major areas that the town really needs assistance because it's not just Holliston, it's all of our cities and towns that need this.
I wanted to end by just offering, we know we have a lot of work to do. Forgive us if we reach out to you again for more clarity. It's only because we know you've been so helpful.
Me too.
We've got a lot of folks on our end, Mr. Shader and the Finance Committee, obviously would be very instrumental in helping us to this end goal. We have a new town administrator who's not a bad finance guy himself, so I suspect between all our good help and, and our efforts, we'll, we'll get to where we need to go. But with your help, I feel comfortable on our path. So, thank you so much for joining us tonight. Ken, I think before we go on, you had a remark to make. You were gonna move on to your next meeting?
Yes, I just wanted to say to anybody who's here for the Finance Committee portion, we're gonna split off at this point following the update from our legislative contingent. So, the Finance Committee members will be switching over to our Zoom momentarily, our other Zoom momentarily to continue our meeting. So, if anybody wants to follow that one, they can join us over there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Representative Dykema.
All right.
Thank you.
My thanks again, Senator Spilka, Representative Dykema, we appreciate it. Finance Committee, as always, pleasure to see you all. We'll catch you down the road. We're gonna move on with our agenda this evening with a coronavirus, coronavirus community update from Chief Mike Cassidy. Mike?
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.
Stay healthy and well, and we're here to help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief because I know that you have a very full night ahead of you.
We're here for you, Mike.
I understand that.
The people's business.
I'm awful between a robust agenda and a full agenda, but tonight, you have a full one. So, it's no secret that last Wednesday, when the Department of Public Health updated their designations for the communities in the Commonwealth, as they do each Wednesday, approximately 6:00 PM, we went from the gray to the red category, red denoting higher risk. We went from a 1.0 average daily incident rate per 100,000 for the previous reporting period to 8.3 last Wednesday evening. So, that is something that we, as a community, have been dealing with. Since that designation was achieved, we've had a few additional cases that have come onboard that we're monitoring. Our current case count is 94, which includes 77 who have recovered, two COVID-related fatalities early on, and we still have 15 active cases. We are eagerly awaiting the DPH weekly report that will be published again tomorrow around 6:00 PM. However, we are not expecting a significant shift in our designation this week until additional cases roll off.
Chief, before you move on from that, could you just speak briefly about what does that mean, being a red designation?
So, the Department of Public Health is analyzing the community-level data, which allows local officials to make informed decisions with regards to whether or not they want to move on to certain reopening phases as they're approved at the state level. It helps, it's one metric that can be used by school districts when determining whether or not they would be implementing a certain instructional model. In terms of day-to-day operations for us, we're going to continue to urge the vigilance that we've been saying for weeks. Wash your hands, stay away from large crowds, keep at least six feet from people, wear your approved face coverings. Because of the nature of our incident rates that prompted us going to red, we have not needed to avail ourselves of some of the state resources that you've seen in some other cities and towns. When there was more community spread in certain communities in the Commonwealth, they were able to bring in state resources and they were able to campus neighborhoods, they were able to hand out flyers at businesses, they were able to do more enforcement activities where it was determined that community spread was occurring. Because our change from gray to red was primarily prompted by a cluster at a long-term care facility, and that long-term care facility is addressing it, there being, case management is being done by our nursing consultant, they have assistance from the state epidemiologist. There's really no action item. They, they don't need to send out a large team to pamphlet neighborhoods because that's not where the disease is really being spread right now. Of the new cases that we've gotten since last week, several of them were additional cases at that same long-term care facility.
The challenge is we're a small town, so a cluster can turn us from gray to red very quickly.
Yes, and until those cases roll off, and again, that Wednesday designation that is published by DPH is based on a 14-day average for the period ending the previous Saturday. So, until those cases from that long-term care facility start rolling off, our risk designation will likely not improve significantly.
Got it.
Just to add to that, folks at home should understand that as a result of that specific congregant care facility incident, there's additional contact tracing going on between potential residents of the long-term facility, their families in Holliston, and so forth. We found no connections yet between positive cases at the home and anyone outside the home. Contact tracing right now has revealed no connections.
Correct. Yes, that is, that is a fair characterization, absolutely.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, keep going, Mike. Great. So, as a result of our receiving the red higher-risk designation on Wednesday, the town administrator and I had a great call on Friday afternoon with the COVID-19 Enforcement and Intervention Team.
CEIT.
Yes, the CEIT, because we are government and therefore we have acronyms.
Acronyms.
Absolutely. They offered great support. We had a really healthy conversation. I really felt that we were on a good path towards addressing any needs that are existing in the community. They did have representatives from multiple state agencies that were on the call, that were available to come out. If we have an issue at a particular type of business, they're willing to come in. If we find that there are additional cases that are traced back to a business that's not even in our town, multiple people work somewhere, common workplace, they're happy to, to follow that up. If we have an establishment that serves liquor under a license that's issued by the, the Board, the ABCC offered to assist with any enforcement there. So, the, the state certainly has, has made it readily apparent that the full resources of the Commonwealth are available to us. We have a follow-up call this Thursday with the CEIT again, and we'll, we'll continue to, to use any resources we can from them.
I have a follow-up question, but do you have a question for the chief?
No, I do not, no.
I see Chairwoman Stacy Raffey's on the line. We are a full week plus into school reopening to some extent. Do you want to give a brief report on how it's going? Is everything according to plan, any issues?
So, I, I certainly would not presume to speak for them, but I do know from my contact with the building and level administrators, as well as the central administration, that the reopening plan is going well. There are some learning curves, whether it's regards to drop off and pickup, whether it's, I talked to one building administrator today and they mentioned that there were a lot of lost individuals in the building because of the one-way traffic in certain hallways. So, when you used to be able to just go down the hall and take a, a turn and suddenly be at your next class, you now have to go and circumnavigate the building to get to where you might want to be. And that's, that's an adaptive curve. And today was the first day of in-person instruction at the high school. So, we're not a week into it for them. This was the first cohort that, that came into the building, and it was, it, it went great. It went very smoothly. I think it's going well. And again, we just want to make sure that whether it's with the beginning of sports, that those are starting to take place, or it's the in-person in the schools, that everyone remain very diligent and vigilant in doing all of the mitigation measures that we've been talking for, for months. And, you know, they're going outside, they're taking mask breaks. It's all a new learning environment for everyone.
I also received requests for me to put people in contact with Holliston school officials to say, how did you do this? I've had people reach out to me to say, you know, it seems to be going well. We'd like to sort of follow along the same playbook. So, I've put them in touch with, you may be getting a couple of calls, Stacy.
Stacy, you want to add anything about school reopening so far? Are you pleased? Any issues?
Hi, thanks. You know what, the chief really summed it up quite well. It's almost like he's been there every day, checking on traffic and what's going on. I just, I would certainly say that, much to my chagrin initially, I think that this very staggered approach to returning the students back, we literally returned almost by grade. We started with the second and third grade on September 16th, and then we did first grade, then we did kindergarten, and then we slowly moved on with the cohorts. And while that was disappointing for some of us who really wanted to get the kids out the door, you know, hindsight's 20-20, I think that was a really smart way to slowly get everyone into this new routine. I think that the planning, you know, so many kudos and much appreciation to the building administrators, Dr. Cufker, Dr. Vitello, Keith Boudet, their staff, and so much, you know, our teachers are heroes. They're really taking this new environment, they're working through it, and they are, you know, leading the way with the kids. And the kids are, I think they're doing pretty well, if I don't, you know, I, I'm quite pleased. I think it's been a great group effort. Yep, there's gonna be some challenges here or there. We're learning new routines, new traffic patterns, but overall, I think we have been very lucky and I, I'm looking forward to see how the next few weeks go now that the entire district will be, will be back on, you know, back on.
That's great. I think folks at home should appreciate not only what Stacy, how Stacy described, Mike, you spent a lot of time in the schools. It's an invaluable amount of time. I think it's benefiting and giving people some, some comfort, knowing that Fire Chief's around, he's got this covered. Stacy and I talk at least weekly, if not more often. The lines of communication are open. They have our full commitment to continue supporting. So, our best to you and the school administrators going forward. If you need anything, give us a call. You have a question?
We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Sorry, Tina has a remark.
Just a question for Chief Cassidy. Am I hearing correctly that you are in favor of one-way traffic?
All right, here we go. Moving on. Nicely played, I might say. Very nicely played.
So, as I was saying, that public health officials are working very closely with managers of both the long-term care facility and also an apartment complex, where we've had a couple of cases, to support cleaning efforts, messaging, and contact tracing. We already stole some of the thunder, but I did work very closely with the school administration last week on messaging to their stakeholders as the reopening plan continued to be implemented and school fall sports has begun at the high school. I did share that with, with Tina a couple of days ago, that the messaging that went out from the superintendent, I was editing in real time. The two of us truly were collaborating on that letter that went out last Wednesday night. And speaking of communications on Wednesday, I do want to also thank Representative Dykema for helping to get our talking points out in her newsletter last week as well. In terms of other activities that we've been up to and what we've got on the horizon, we did complete our quarterly report with Administration and Finance on Friday for the period ending June 30th for our CARES Act appropriations expenditures, as well as our anticipated federal reimbursement through FEMA. Our next report is due to A&amp;F on October 30th for the period ending September 30th, and our next application is due to FEMA on October 15th for expenses for the period ending September 15th. So, we've got a couple more reports coming up in the next 30 days. That's it for the, for the COVID update.
Thank you.
No additional departmental requests this evening for additional funds. I do have three in the pipeline, one from facilities, one from town clerk, and one from Board of Health.
Great.
But nothing ready for prime time this evening.
Got it, okay.
I have one additional question.
Please, go ahead, yeah.
So, I had mentioned it to you before as well, and I just was wondering if there's anything else that you could share with the public about Halloween?
Ah, yes, Halloween. Halloween has been a frequent topic of our.
If we could weigh in, we had a communication on that as well.
Yes.
And I asked the chief and the town administrator to direct the issue to the Board of Health. We have to take some guidance from them as a, as a health matter.
Board of Health is meeting currently, and they will also be meeting next Tuesday.
It's on their agenda, correct?
Correct, it is.
Okay.
So, basically what you're saying, what you're saying is that the Board of Health should be giving some, should be giving some guidance?
Yes.
Concerning this, based on their meeting this week and perhaps.
So, the CDC has given guidance on celebrating holidays, including but not limited to Halloween. The DPH has published guidelines for celebrating Halloween safely and references the CDC guidance. And I had asked the health director if his board could review those two guiding documents and see if they had any Holliston-specific guidance that I could share with the board.
Wonderful.
There are groups and communities in the, or groups and organizations in the community that have offered to do larger events in lieu of people going door-to-door. I know Parks and Recreation already has something planned, and I know of one nonprofit that has proposed to the Board of Health and has sort of gotten the, why don't we wait until the board discusses this before we give you the green light?
Got it.
But, yeah, I hope to have something more for you.
Wonderful, thank you.
So, don't, don't, don't buy too much candy yet. I know you have access to candy. Don't necessarily always buy it, but.
Just bring it here, that's all, right here.
It gets picked up on these high-definition mics very easily.
Great, and I heard you listed the town clerk. I had spoken to her, she may have some interest in accessing CARES funding for the upcoming election impact.
Absolutely.
That's great. Anything else from the board for the chief this evening on the coronavirus community update? Anything on the CARES Act programmatic update, anything more? Onto the town meeting schedule.
Ah, yes.
So, that's next on our agenda. We have currently scheduled town meeting, special town meeting for October 26th. Last week, when you were with us, Mike, we entered a conversation surrounding school readiness to host. It was clear to us that the 26th is probably as it's currently positioned, not a good day for the schools.
Correct.
When we scheduled it, who knew? But that's how things go. This evening, I wanted to hear from you on any communication you might have had with the schools, houses of worship, I think we also looked at, or other large assembly areas, on what you would recommend for potential venues and opportunities should we decide to move it. Please, go ahead.
Great, so thank you. I did check with those houses of worship who have the capacity to host our meeting, and they indicated that the guidance that they have received, the only outside groups that they're allowing right now are blood drives and flu clinics. So, they said they would love to be able to help us out, but they're not able to at this time. So, houses of worship is, is off the table. So, we're back to the schools, which means that it either needs to be on the eve of a day when school is not going to be in session, if it were a weeknight, or a weekend day. So, I did check, there are a couple of dates in November, December, that it would be available to us and we, because they're, they're not open to outside groups right now. And so, they have said, when we need it, as long as it's not on the eve. as it's not on the eve of a day when they have school, they'll make it available to us for our use.
In your opinion, you, when you think of location, we had annual at Placentino, are you thinking return to that venue, or is the high school a better solution?
I'm thinking that in terms of the logistics of the setup and the cost, I would say that it would be much easier for everyone involved if we were to return to the high school.
The auditorium or the field house?
Yeah, the high school, the field house wouldn't really be an option due to the things that are being stored there right now.
Okay.
So, it would need to be the auditorium. It does have the capacity to be able to accommodate not only our quorum, but a larger number even spaced out. So, we wouldn't need to set up a satellite location as we did at Placentino at the cafeteria.
I remember asking this question, but I forget the answer. What would be the capacity with, and I understand families sit together, the reasonable social distance?
Do I remember 250 or 450?
Yeah, it's about 242, I would say.
Okay. That's safely within most. We don't have, our current warrant doesn't include sewers or anything like that.
Right.
Yet, so. Anyways, well, that's promising. So, we have an opportunity to return to the high school, potentially on the eve of a non-school day, following day, and so forth, and the upcoming months.
Right. Or if it were a weekend day, we could do it during the day as opposed to having to do it at night, if we thought that that would be more convenient.
And I already forget what, I think we talked about our bylaw. There is nothing in our bylaw that, like there was in the spring, that we would encounter for scheduling another date.
The...
In terms of notice, remember that, Mike?
Right, yeah. The notice requirements are within two weeks.
Got it. Okay.
And I would just mention that the reason, I think you said earlier that, you know, we couldn't foresee when this was planned, the 10/26 date comes from the bylaw. It says this Monday of each month. I think there's a provision in there in case of Halloween, but that's really it. So, it's really, you know, the select board is sort of looking at going off of that course that's set by bylaw, which you absolutely can do.
Got it.
Gentlemen, let me just point out to you that Wednesday, November 11th, is Veterans Day. That's no school. So, Tuesday, December, excuse me, Tuesday, November 10th
Right.
Is a weekday where there is not school following.
Correct. Yeah, I had mentioned that date last week, if we weren't looking to do a weekend.
My only thought with that date is, does it give enough decompression for the clerk's office following the election? But it may, and we can certainly follow up with them. But it would be not too long after that, but it's certainly a date that the chief mentioned last time and could work.
Let's have a conversation around this issue, because I think we have to make a decision. I don't think we can keep 10/26 right now.
Nope.
May I point out that I think that we heard from the senator and the representative, correct me if I'm wrong, but that there would be an FY21 state budget by the end of October?
I don't think they definitively said that. They said they're hoping to move in that direction.
Okay.
They think that things will start to open up in November.
Yeah.
So, definitely, yeah.
They have a little clarity after the election.
Let's organize the conversation around this flow. Ben, if you have any thoughts on moving special town meeting, your thoughts?
Well, I think we definitely have to move special town meeting. And I do want to be sensitive to the town clerk. The election is important and substantial amount of work for her and her team, and I don't want to try to give her too much on, one on top of the other. And then there's the additional factor of, well, we need to give a little bit of time to be able to have something to talk about. Like, I mean, if, with, absent a state budget, it's going to be a little murky to be able to go forward with it. What I would suggest is, I mean, certainly November 10th, I'd say is a possibility, maybe even pushing it out a little further than that to like November 13th, Friday, or November 14th, Saturday. I'd say as the earliest that we should look to from, logistically, and in terms of giving our town clerk a little bit of a chance, a little bit of breathing room after the election. So, that's where I am. I mean, we could certainly, I mean, if we start getting a little further out, we're starting, we're going to start hitting into holidays in November. So, we want to be, we do want to be careful to that. So, I would probably suggest either the 10th or 13th is where I would personally be, but I'm interested to hear what you folks think.
I would just add something that I said to the finance committee last week on their call, which is, I get the sort of concern and the desire to have more clarity from the state. At the same point, I think the clarity that we got tonight, which is that, no, that we can bank on Chapter 70, we can bank on UGA.
Yep.
Personally, I would feel comfortable holding, based on where the finances are at the town.
Okay.
Holding the meeting. That doesn't mean that it's not helpful to have that clarity, and you certainly should take that into consideration as you see fit. But I would just point that out.
Yeah. My only concern about those things is like, I think it's great. I felt very, it was nice to hear Karen say those things. My concern is, are they going to, sometimes they do things with the offsets, and they'll say, "Okay, we did a little late," and then they cut back on the offsets, and then it sort of kind of comes out in the wash. So, I'd be interested to see what kinds of things are suggested from that, from that side of things. If we have a little more clarity on that, I would feel more comfortable. But hearing the senator tonight, I felt very good about those numbers as well. So, thank you, Ben.
Tina?
I am the mother of four children. I do not pretend to own my schedule. Therefore, I look at November and I say, "Pick a day." Friday the 13th is Friday the 13th.
Probably not.
Okay.
That's when this all started.
Yeah, that's right. It was March 13th.
It was Friday the 13th.
You're right. Is it really?
Yeah, it was March 13th.
Okay. Well, there you go. Maybe that's...
Well, the 12th.
So, I have no preference, other than, as stated before, that the election should not be something that is, we shouldn't be competing with the resources that we have in our town clerk's office for an election and a town meeting. I feel quite strongly about that. So, we're looking at a November date regardless, and so I really don't have a preference. So, I think it's unfair to turn to the clerk to say, the town clerk, to say, "Does the 10th work for you?" She's going to rise to the challenge, whatever's placed before her. So, I think it's among the three of us to talk this through, but I'm leaning towards, like you, Ben, the 10th or the 13th. I don't want to get up into November, late November with Thanksgiving. I just, I...
It gets harder.
I don't know. Something about that doesn't feel right. I've got nothing more to go on than the fact that it just simply doesn't feel right.
And it also gets into setting the tax rate. Like, when did the assessors set the tax rate and things like that? And how does that impact what happens?
Yeah.
Just for your consideration, too, the one thing that we normally do as well, when we do the Monday night, as laid out, we'll say Monday night, if it goes into another date, we'll give the second date and then potentially the third date, right?
The 13th.
So, one positive thing about looking at a weekend, which I know Holliston hasn't, you know, theoretically, or hasn't done historically, is that, you know, earlier in the day gives you more time to play with to sort of make sure that you're getting all the business done within that day, and it's less important to have the backup day, so to speak. Just something to consider.
Is that, that's more of a nod for the 14th?
I just, the impact of having a night meeting is you're generally going to need at least one realistic sort of backup date, whereas on the weekend, you could sort of say, you're leaving yourself enough time, based on when you do it on that day, that you think you could realistically guarantee that it will all be done within that day.
Got it. Okay.
Logistics.
Let me throw out a few things. I thought the remarks we heard this evening were very helpful. I had an expectation that they were going to politely give us a sense of what things were. But we started to hear some definitive timeframes emerge, and when the senator said, "We've got a, we expect to be in business producing a budget in early November," was meaningful. And I think that traditionally, when the town sets its town meetings, it has about a five-month breathing period, and that's good. It allows the town to kind of settle on business from one point to another. So, putting that kind of distance between, in this case, our July 20th timeframe and currently October 26th is too close for practical reasons. Imagining that, then, moving from July 20th, oh, five months, brings us into the November, December range. And I don't think that the annual town meeting has much to do with setting the tax rate, Ben. I could be wrong on that. Is that, they act independent of any action at town meeting. Is that correct?
If the special town meeting were to do something to raise and appropriate, it certainly could. We don't currently have any plans for that. No, the taxes...
It wouldn't disturb anything that Kathy's producing for DOR. I've always understood them to be mutually exclusive things.
So, I'm going to take that to mean then that Article 5, fund transfer to affect the tax rate, would be separate from the tax rate setting that the Board of Assessors will go through?
So, generally speaking, when the town has had that article in the October timeframe, that could impact the tax rate discussion.
But we never, we have not in the past...
It has not been acted on.
We have not acted on it, that I remember.
I'm just going to put out there then, just for the board's memory, that Dan Alfred did in the, so the vice chair of the finance committee did ask for consideration that the 44 from the overlay, $484,000, be considered for, I believe, Article 5 there to affect the tax rate. So, that doesn't need to be this conversation. But to the question about timing of special town meeting and the work of the Board of Assessors, I think that's still...
I was kind of looking at four different dates. The 14th was one, the earliest. The 28th is another. The 21st, I think, is the Saturday following Thanksgiving.
28 is following.
Beg your pardon?
28 is following.
Beg your pardon. Okay, thank you. Then, December 5th and December 12th. All of them are Saturdays. I think we should attempt to have a town meeting on a Saturday, obviously to accommodate the schools. But I also think inherently, it's a good opportunity for us to find out, can we grab more people? Are more people available to attend town meeting on a weekend than they would be on a weekday? I've always thought that that was something we should try to focus more on. So, that's why I selected those dates. I was thinking December 5th, simply because it gave us that proximity, or not proximity, that distance between the annual town meeting and a special. And it gives our friends at the state that time in November to flush out what they're going to do, and allows us to then rebound, collect that information, and produce any kind of revised FY21 estimates and get our work done. It effectively would provide roughly an extra five weeks of time to prepare for fall town meeting. So, I was thinking, Ben, you were on the 14th. I was, I'm thinking December 5th to give us a little bit more time.
Sure.
And...
I have one question for Chief Cassidy. The last reporting period for the CARES Act, I don't know why I'm thinking these thoughts, but it does seem relevant. You mentioned that the next period ends tomorrow, December 30th, and the report will be due sometime thereafter. The last reporting period that we will be closing out ends, like, when's the last report due with this round of CARES Act funding? I'd like to know that piece of information.
I would have to double-check.
I was trying to find your email. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, because it's for the period, it would be for the period ending December 31st.
Oh, so a long path.
So, I would expect that the report would be due late January.
Okay. All right. So, not relevant. Okay.
So, my thinking is just, more time is better. It gives us time to digest whatever the state does, make adjustments to what we do, and gives us a little bit more time to plan for all of it.
Sure.
Simple as that. And it's a Saturday. That was one of the things I'd like to try to do. Thoughts on that, on those dates?
I'm fine with that. I was just trying to think about, you know, but if you want to go December 5th, I think that's totally fine. That's totally fine with me. I was just thinking about, like, maybe if we did like a November 14th, that would give us a little bit of time to kind of lead in if we needed to. But it looks like the chief actually has a comment.
Hi.
If you determine that it's going to be December 5th.
Yeah.
You would need to set a snow date, since it will be in the winter.
No doubt.
So, we would want to just publish that ahead of time.
Yep.
It's not going to snow in 2020.
I would argue late November, you probably, in the same space.
I agree. No, if we're getting beyond October 26th, we had the snow toe, snow toe a couple of years ago.
Wait a minute. Isn't this COVID thing getting rid of all snow days, isn't it? Never mind.
Didn't 2020 teach you that you should never plan for anything, and that the unexpected is certain to happen? So, you're saying Saturday, December 5th?
Right. Where the follow-up meeting would be the 12th, I think, the, you know, as Travis said, if you had a snow day, or if you need to continue business, you have the following week to do that.
Well, the first decision in my mind was to postpone beyond October 26th, past the November election. So, check that box, check that box. And then, in terms of state information that we would find valuable for any planning purposes, I believe we've checked that box with the call tonight.
Yeah.
So, there's nothing more on my list of things that would guide a decision than those things.
Right. And you don't own your calendar. Me and Ben do.
That's right. Fair enough. Yeah.
I guess in the other, the only other question...
But don't make a mistake. That's the thing. Because if you make a mistake, then it all goes.
The only other question I would have is, you know, what time of day? I mean, if we want to, do we want to go like a four o'clock or something like that? I don't know.
What?
One o'clock? You want to do that?
Okay.
Yeah.
Let them get done before dinner.
Yeah. All right.
So, December 13th.
They get mad at dinner.
Yeah.
Now, I would just say, too, that the backup date would probably not be the Sunday. That would still be the day before the school. So, you know, backup date would be the following Saturday.
Correct. So, one o'clock, and that would probably give us enough runway, because we'd have to finish by 11:00. So, I think we could finish by 11:00, right?
Yeah. Yeah, for sure.
So, should we take a, do you want a motion?
Let's take a motion with this provision. If we encounter any unknown or unforeseen issues, Mr. Irhearn, that you, you know, you hear about, let us know. But I think we're making an attempt to reschedule in good faith, understanding it gives us more time to digest a state budget process. It's in consideration of a school calendar, and there needs to keep their schools safe. And the chief has another point to make.
And I have already confirmed that that date, both dates are available.
Oh, the 5th and 12th. Great.
Before we take the motion, you're saying the high school auditorium, December 5th at 1:00 PM is the discussion. Okay.
Yes. And then, I think the only other question I have would be, what would we, would we leave the warrant open until?
So, the warrant is currently open, as you voted it through October 1st at 4:00 PM.
Yep.
We would need to take a vote, and we don't need to do it tonight to reopen the warrant at some point, which, let me look at the calendar when I have a little more time to figure that out. But I wouldn't probably open it for too long, but if people, as they approach that date, you know, give people the opportunity.
Yeah. The intent is to give us more opportunity to get business done.
Yeah. Some people would kick the tires on some citizens petitions and things of that nature. So, I would be re-engaging any of those individuals to let them know that it will be reopened, but also sending out a memo, as I did through the media.
Sure.
When we opened it originally.
Okay. So, Ben, if you would like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to move town meeting to December, from October 26th to December 5th at 1:00 PM in the high school auditorium.
Backup date.
And a backup date of a potential snow date or carryover date, if necessary, to December 12th at 1:00 PM in the high school auditorium.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That carries. Okay. Thank you very much.
I do not have any of the cell phone numbers for the finance committee. I wonder if we should notify them so they know.
Yeah, they'll find out later.
Okay. There you go. All right.
I let them know that any changes tonight, I would let them know of. So, I will send them an email.
We have reached a public comment period at our agenda. Mr. Sparrow?
So, I have two comments. The first one is, Travis might be speaking to this, I'm not sure, but Travis, myself, and our new assistant, Council of Aging Assistant Director, Brian, went to the MWR TA for a tour last Wednesday, and I had a nice, a nice time. Representative Dykema helped set us, set up the meeting, and I just wanted to say thank you to her for setting that up. And it was very informative to see what kinds of resources they have available and some of the work that they're doing on behalf of Holliston, and particularly the seniors in our, in our community. So, I wanted to just sort of mention that. I think, I'm not sure, you know, there probably is some follow-up that needs to be done, but I'm not sure entirely what that would be. But I do want to say that it's, it was, it was great to see. It was nice to see the resources and the work that they're doing, and I think it's great. And it was a good...
Very impressive operation.
It is a very impressive operation, right in our backyard, helping, helping our, our community. The second thing I wanted to say was, there have been some chatter on social media about some people cutting down people's signs in their yards. And I take these kinds of things very seriously, because I think it's very important. I think free speech is something that's very important to our community and to our country at large. We have a First Amendment for a reason, that, you know, encourages and desires people to be able to speak freely and have their opinions, and to express those opinions in a thoughtful and respected manner. And I was disappointed to hear that some folks were having some of their, some of their signs vandalized. It was on their property. I think that's really unfortunate. And I just want to say, as we get into the season of elections, and there's a lot of passion and opinions, to take a beat and to listen to each other and to be respectful... passion and opinions, to take a beat and to listen to each other and to be respectful of people's opinions, even if they disagree with you. Sometimes, listening, you might find that there's more common ground than you realize. So I just encourage everybody to be respectful and to realize that free speech is important, and we have to care for it, even if sometimes we disagree with the speech that is given. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Thanks, Ben. Tina?
I do not have public comment this evening. I recognize we have some participants on the call who've been waiting perhaps for public comment, I'm not sure, so I have nothing to add.
I just have a few quick items. I first want to recognize the retirement of Captain Tim Costello from the Holliston Fire Department. Captain Costello served the Fire Department 25 years, chief?
Just shy of 29.
Just shy of 29. I think we would need to recognize that kind of a commitment and service to a community, so thank you, Captain Costello. I also want to recognize the passing of John Greendale Sr. this past week. John is the father of Alan Greendale, is on our Fire Department. John was also the clerk of the work for Town Hall when it was renovated. I did not know John very well, I knew him in passing, but he was a gentleman and a pleasure and a, and a Holliston man who gave a lot to the community. So thank you, and my best wishes to his family. Very briefly, yesterday, I think I mentioned this on our Zoom call with Senator Spilker and Rep. Dykema, yesterday Travis and I, along with Sean Reese, met with three members of Mastott to begin an onsite walk in preparation of a more comprehensive site walk, maybe in a month. But yesterday, we started with a quick drive-through to Lowland Industrial Park, evaluated the three points of entry and exit, carried on to Concord Street, where we looked at some state road conditions, followed it up on several points on Washington Street for drainage, crosswalk conditions, sidewalks, and other infrastructure improvements that we're looking to work with Mastott on. We evaluated a potential traffic signal area on the outside of Hopping Brook, right into the cemetery. That will be a challenging project when we get to it. We ended up on South Street, where we concluded our three and a half hour time with them. Very productive. They're very willing to work with us, which is refreshing. They were offering us a lot of information. We intend to follow up with them. And for members of our board, I want to alert you that we will put an item on our agenda for next week. We will formally inform the public, specifically the Lowland Industrial Park folks, who we had a conversation with back in late August, about our progress to date, what we're doing, how the strategic plan of handling these traffic issues is starting to develop. It's, it's something that will take some time, but it's been, we've been busy. Mr. Ahern has drafted a very fine memo to your attention, so I think you understand the direction some of us are thinking and taking. But we want to let the residents know what that waypoint looks like and hear their feedback as early as next week. So with that, I just wanted to open it up to any public comment on this evening's Zoom call. I do see some folks up there that may want to say something.
Star nine, if they're on the phone, to raise their hand.
So if you are on a cell phone, hit star nine to raise your hand, and you'll be called upon. And at this point, I'm going to have to take a cue, I think, from Chris on who might be willing to speak, if anyone.
See, hands raised.
Give them a couple of minutes here.
There's one.
Carol.
Hi, Carol, good evening.
Hi, Carol, good evening. Hi, how are you guys?
We're doing well. What's on your mind?
Um, so next week, should I be, I mean, number one, is there any information whatsoever that would be handed out prior to the meeting regarding the Lowland site? Or, or maybe it's going to hear, like?
More than likely, sure, great question. More than likely to be an oral update. We want people to understand specifically what we're doing and what direction we're going into. Mr. Ahern has drafted a memo to us, which is more internal, but to the extent that we have any information to share, count on it being verbal through this meeting, and of course, interactive. We'd like your feedback.
Okay, thank you.
No worries, thank you.
So that will be an agenda item, so people will know sort of where if else, so absolutely.
All right. Any other questions on the call this evening for public comment?
Me again.
Oh, hi me, oh, hi me again. Hi, Carol. Go ahead, go ahead.
Let me, um, oh, God. So, are we still ongoing with the, with the traffic study, or has the traffic study actually been completed?
No traffic study has been completed.
Okay.
Carol, if I may, in about 15, 20 minutes, or less actually, our town administrator's going to provide an update. He's going to update us on a couple of different things. One of them will be, I believe you asked a question at last week's meeting, or the meeting before, about the monitoring of those residences' properties with wells. So he has an update for that under his Town Administrator Update. And then he will also be going through the warrant and some of the articles that are on there, and you're going to hear, if you stay for this, you'll hear an, a discussion about an article that requests appropriation for a traffic engineering work related to Lowland Street, related to Hopping Brook. So if you want to stay put, you'll get that during the Town Administrator Update.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other hands up, Mike?
No, sir.
All right, we'll move on.
Sorry, I think we skipped over voting the warrant, did I miss that?
Yeah, we didn't do number five.
So it was signed yesterday because I needed it, but I think you still need to vote it. So under number five? That's just the weekly warrant, not the sworn discussion?
Do you wish to read that into the record, Mr. Clerk?
I will make a motion to approve the warrant for this week in the amount of $3,334,356.92. Of that, $1,183,364.20 is town payroll.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Yes, second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That carries. Thank you, Ben.
Good there, you're good.
Good catch, Travis. We'll move on. Comments from the town administrator?
Yes, okay. So just to reiterate where we were, the memo, just highlighting everything that went on at the Lowland Industrial Park Traffic Forum, I'm going to have that sort of, the Ts crossed and Is dotted, and we will have that on the agenda for next week, as requested by the board. One thing that already came up was Halloween, so the Board of Health is currently meeting tonight. They will also meet next week, and so I will keep you up to date on that. As it relates to the well question that came up last week, in terms of, the specific question was what role the Water Department plays in private wells, and should it play a greater role? The answer really is statutorily, the group that regulates overseas, tracks private wells is the Board of Health. So in terms of records of who has private wells, in terms of status of those wells, that is all held within the Board of Health, which was the answer to the question. And if there is follow-up question, you know, that is who I generally will be directing anybody to when it comes to status of private wells. The Water Department certainly is interested in any information related to it, but is not able to regulate, so to speak, which I believe was the original question. And then if Chris Mayo is listening and not to one of the other meetings, if he could put up something that we discussed when it comes to the Front Street one-way, thank you, Chris. He has also devised something that is on our website now, it's live, signs have gone up. As we discussed last week, the Select Board voted between now and April 1st to pilot a one-way on Front Street from Central to Vine. And so this is the page that we would like, it is up on the front page of the town's website. And if you see at the top there, it says, submit a comment on the project here. You can go in, as you, as you experience the, the Front Street change, you can provide your feedback to the town. The Select Board has this in place by vote through April 1st. And we have also secured a license to cross in front of that building that is at the, sort of, in the middle there, to go through that space to make the crosswalk work, which is also going to be piloted through April 1st. So that, this entire thing, what we're looking for, you know, a little bit of a, of a unique grant program, essentially what it is, is piloting these, these shared uses of streets and spaces. This is one where we're, you know, sort of connecting rail trail, but also getting people outside and sort of rethinking how this space, which is an awkward space to begin with, sort of works. And we are looking for feedback, you know, public feedback through the pilot period. Normally, you know, we would, we would look for all that ahead of time, and this is sort of giving us the opportunity for people to see it and provide feedback as they experience it. So here is the page, this was requested by the Select Board, and I think Chris did an excellent job, so thank you, Chris. While this map is up, actually, sort of off, off-screen here is another change, just to give you an update on, the Upper Charles Trail behind Casey's is progressing. That work is, actually, trail work is being done with the idea that if we can get that trail up and running and guardrails up before the end of the season, that we can remove the detour in time, that the detour won't have to be in place over the winter, which is a safety concern that we have for kids on the way to school. So we'd like to get that done, we are progressing. One update that will be coming soon, that the Select Board requested, is where the budget stands now that we've gotten to where we've gotten. And I think that I should have that to you tomorrow, and we can certainly discuss it for next meeting. So if there's not any questions on those, like I said, thank you to Chris for getting this up on Front Street. I think this will be an excellent way to, to get feedback from the community.
Yeah, Travis, if I may, on the Casey's crossing, Casey's, excuse me, Casey's parking lot work, I just want to share a comment left by one of the crossing guards with concerns over what is being observed in the morning with, with families negotiating that area. And I mean, I'm sure we're all adjusting to the start of school, but I think that there is a concern with not having access for, again, young children, families who are heading down to the middle elementary schools. So the sooner we get the detour removed, the better. I know everyone's working hard on that, and I just wanted to stress, you know, in real time, it's having an impact on people who normally use that space for all manner of different things, including on the weekends for their recreational time, but certainly in terms of our children for walking to school. So to the extent that we can encourage a timely removal of the detour, I want to keep stressing that, so thank you.
And I would say, based on the timeline that Karen Sherman put up on the website, so Karen Sherman and Tom Samantha sort of adopted that, that program to keep it moving. Obviously, the, the grant that has paid for it came from, from other sources, and they've sort of taken over, which I appreciate. And I think that they're sticking to the schedule that was put out originally to remove the detour by that timeframe that was posted.
Okay.
And so, again, thank you to them for moving that along, and if anything changes, I will keep you up to date.
Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. Any comments for the town administrator?
Sorry, I was just checking if you had anything on those two. I got two more things. The back steps, I'm hoping by the end of this week, are fixed at Town Hall. That, we had to switch with who we were dealing with, but we hope that that will get situated quickly. Again, if anybody's unaware, we had an incident with a truck that, remove those, obviously, there's going to be no cost to the town, it was not the town's fault, but we do want to get that, those fixed for safety reasons. As the chief mentioned earlier, we are now doing weekly updates with the CEIT, weekly check-ins, and so I'll keep you updated if anything comes from those. We have seen an uptick in fraudulent claims against unemployment, and we are tracking those down. Unfortunately, the state has sort of removed the mechanism that they used to have on their website for reporting them, because they've been so inundated. At the same point, we are confident that the fraudulent claims are not being generated by data breaches internally. So that was obviously helpful to, to be able to sort of track down. And then lastly, I will be with the Governance Committee on this Thursday at 4:00 PM to answer the questions that they've sort of put forth to the Select Board, the Finance Committee, Finance Staff, and the School Committee. I'm next up, so I'll be with them on Thursday. And then last Thursday night, the Stipend Committee got up and running. I, I started the meeting as chair, and then they voted in Joan Shaughnessy as their chair, so she'll be taking over, and the clerk is Shelley Botchner, and it seems like a good group. And if they have anything, I let them know that you're open to any questions, and I can organize them coming in front of you and discussing as the Governance Committee has if they feel the need. Otherwise, I'm, I'm here to support them, and that is all I have.
Thank you, Travis. Any questions for the town administrator from the Zoom call? Hearing none. We will move on to the warrant update by the town administrator.
All right, and Chris, if you could put up the list of items that we discussed last week, I think it's sort of only come up one more, which is number 15 there, which Tina mentioned earlier. So we can get as in-depth as we'd like. I suppose one way to look at this would be that we have now changed our date, and we are less under the, I don't, it's less hectic now that we have a date that is not October 26th. So I can certainly do a high-level overview, we can get as in-depth as you'd like. How would you like me to handle this now?
I think high level is fine at this point. We've been familiar with it, but it's nice to see it in a, we have it in a Word format, so it's starting to take form.
Okay.
Currently, it looks like you're tracking 15?
15 articles. As we've discussed with various groups, as I said, I've had an indication from one private citizen that they may want to have a citizens petition. I've not actually got that language. Again, the warrant, as was previous set for October 26th, is open through this Thursday at 4:00 PM. And then obviously, we've spoken with the Governance Committee, I haven't received anything there, and I'm unclear, but, so I have a few of those types of placeholders. These are the ones that I know we're going to be discussing. So we can go through the language and change it accordingly. I think, you know, specifically the 15, I think a lot of that needs to be direction from the Select Board, based on the Lowland conversation that we've had. So let me just start quickly at the beginning. Stabilization fund, this is going to replenish the $400,000 that was used in July. My recommendation to the board would be to use the overlay release to, to put the stabilization fund back to how it was before the annual town meeting. That $484,000 would replenish the stabilization fund and more, and put us in good standing. The capital expenditure fund, I believe the free cash has been certified, that information was shared with the Finance Committee, it is, it is above $2.5 million, that's a good number for where we are. Excellent work by Sharon Emrick and Mary Bosquet, I thank them both. To stay on the schedule and have that number certified by this point in the year is, is a very good job by them. That number is going to allow us to put money into the capital expenditure fund and allow the Select Board and the Finance Committee to, to seriously contemplate some, some capital projects that badly need to be done. Sales surplus equipment is a standard article. The capital budget I have currently is, is about $1.1 million, and I can get into those specific items within that if we'd like to. Some of them are still shaking out, especially when it comes to the Town Hall septic and some other items, that more, more time will give us more information and have that shored up. But we can go through that tonight if you'd like. Article V, to fund the transfer to affect the tax rate, as, as Ms. Hyne mentioned earlier, that is the only thing that, if, if you were to want to take any action, put anything on that article, we would want to consider the timeline of when Kathy Pierce comes in front of you for the tax rate setting hearing, but I think I can work with the date that you've set, but we can continue to have that discussion. Article VI, the CPC is continuing their public hearings. I will let Frank Chamberlain know that the date has been changed for town meeting, because that will affect where he is, but he's been hearing a number of items, including ones that I can get into here that have come from our own Facilities Director. Roadway drainage and sidewalk in Mudville, I went over last week, and I can, I can certainly answer any questions there. Sidewalk prioritization plan, you got an update from Ben last week, I think we are, we're pretty set there, but this language that you have in front of you, I can certainly take any feedback on. Water system modernization, again, Ben updated us last week, and again, I can take any feedback on the language. The water main replacement for Winter Street, the question that came up last week was, can this impact sidewalks, or should sidewalks be considered? We can certainly have that discussion. I think one of the things that became clear in, in tracking that down through Sean Reese, having some conversations that I know Ben was involved in as well, is essentially, is the Winter Street project, you know, the top priority answer is yes. Is Winter Street sidewalks something that we can roll up in the same timeline as, as this Winter Street project? Most likely not, it's a very complicated sidewalk project with, when it comes to distance, It's a very complicated sidewalk project when it comes to distance, when it comes to scenic routes that require some issues, when it comes to walls, trees, those types of things.
I'd like to go on the record to suggest that I'm very disappointed in that. You know, I go back to sort of my understanding of how DPW pulses the work that it does with the funds that it provided. And if I'd known that Winter Street was the next street on the list, I probably forgot that. I mean, that's not something I want to retain generally. But I think the DPW folks need to understand that the Board has expressed an interest in the past about an investment in sidewalks, pedestrian infrastructure. It doesn't seem as though those, that interest was, you know, conveyed enough to their planning and their thoughts to even examine the possibility of it. I recognize by asking it last week is virtually at the last minute, but come on, come on, come on. Please, would you try to get through to them? We want to be in the sidewalk business. It's important when we invest in pipe replacement, street repaving, that we're talking about the cost to put sidewalks in and to have a connected plan to do it. We're trying to achieve that this fall, get a study done, but I think the Board at this point expects going forward especially, that kind of conversation needs to be a little bit more on the table. That's just my two cents. I don't know about you folks, but that's, I'm frustrated, to be honest with you.
I would just add to that, that this Town has made a commitment to complete streets and this Town has made a commitment to safe routes to school and we don't have either of those in good standing in this community. If a project like Winter Street does not acknowledge that sidewalks need to be a part of it, and I say that not to dismiss how difficult of a job that would be, but to not have it as a part of the discussion in a meaningful way at this point in time is frustrating because, again, of the commitment we've made to complete streets and safe routes to school. There is just no doubt about the fact, people are walking in the streets accessing downtown who live in the neighborhoods off of Winter Street and to not take that seriously and to not, not, to not have that, it's not that, it's not taken seriously, to not have that a part of the discussion is, to echo John, is very disappointing. There are dozens upon dozens of school-aged children and families that live in the neighborhoods off of Winter Street who want access to the sidewalk networks that bring them in to connect them to downtown, to the trail, to the schools, and to not have that addressed is a failure in my mind at this point in time to acknowledge the role and the commitment we have to complete streets and safe routes to school.
Do you have any comments, Ben?
I think, I mean, I understand. I think from a planning perspective, sidewalks need to be included, but, you know, I myself drove down Winter Street a couple times, past couple days, just to sort of get a feel for what it looks like. And it's a daunting task. I mean, right away, if you turn on Washington Street onto Winter, there's stone walls within like three feet of the, of the street that would, at least one of those would need to be removed and it presents a challenge with the fact that it's a scenic road and if there are town-owned stone walls, then we'd have some challenges in removing those. So I think from a planning perspective, I understand and I agree with my colleagues on the Board, I think Winter Street is a tough, a tough nut to crack with that. And I think, you know, maybe we, you know, go forward, I think yes, we need to include sidewalks in the conversation. I think it's important and that's why I have the prioritization plan and, but I, I think Winter Street's a tough, a tough one and I think would be very costly and perhaps even there might be some additional hurdles in terms of regulations that we might have to overcome.
You know, if I could push back a little bit on that rational explanation is, I would have liked to know, you know?
Yeah, I get you.
Come in, say, this is how much money we have. We do the street, this is what the street's going to cost. We've examined or we've had some engineering done to put in sidewalks for the length of it. Here are your hurdles, here are your challenges. We acknowledge what kind of a street it is. There are a lot of streets like that in Holliston. They're all built by car paths. But I want the dialogue. I want the acknowledgement that when we put streets in, we should be talking about sidewalks. We did that down in Mudville and I thought that was part of what was percolating. I think after the fact, hearing, well, it's probably going to be a real, you know, difficult time to put in, it's a little bit on the excuse side. Not accusing anybody of that, I just wanted to know, I would have wanted to know in the planning stage, here's what it would have meant, John. All right? You've got a, you've got this problem, you've got that problem, you've got utilities, you've got this, would it have delayed that? That's information that helps us understand those challenges. If I could just ask you to go back, if there's any opportunity to have that conversation, I'm all ears. I think my colleagues would too. These are the kind of infrastructure improvements that taxpayers pay for and I want to make it very clear going forward, it has to be part of their thinking and their planning.
No, and I would say, you know, I don't...
Shame on us for not being more clear, I guess.
No, I think that message has been received and I think, I think it would be helpful to me if this sidewalk prioritization plan had been done previously, you know, we would have this information. At the same point, from my understanding, and you have a better understanding of the streets in Holliston than I do with my timeframe here, my understanding is quite frankly, if, when that sidewalk prioritization plan comes in, that Winter Street probably would not be at the top of it. If I'm incorrect in that assumption, that's certainly, I'm open to hear.
Well, I think it would be in it, to Ms. Heinz's point, because of the inherent benefit of moving hundreds of people as pedestrians from numerous neighborhoods to the center of town. It's a major connective road. It probably would have been at the back of the list if it was a cost or feasibility issue. But those are the kinds of things that, for now, why can't we hear about a DPW Director come in and say, if you want sidewalks, it's going to cost X and it's going to take this amount of time? We don't know that right now. All we know is he wants to throw down some asphalt, make a better road surface for the driving experience, which is great, but right now, Ben said he drove down Winter Street. He did so because he can't walk. I mean, that's a sin. That's just my perspective, okay? Enough on that, so keep going.
So that's Article 10. Again, I mean, this is one where, you know, if we want, we can discuss, does it make sense to put this in May instead of this? Winter Street is the top priority when it comes to main, water main replacements. And we can certainly have the discussion of whether or not buying time to have the prioritization plan in place makes sense. As of right now, obviously, this is, as I discussed last week, this is a $2.8 million project funded through the water infrastructure fee that is designed to tick off the top priorities for water main replacements. And so we can continue that discussion. Article 11, the water treatment plan increase authorization. This was discussed last week as well. I would just say, I had some time to sit down with Sharon and Mary and just go through this and say, you know, I think the most beneficial way to approach this is to increase the borrowing authorization on the program. The reason I say that is, what this is saying is now that we're at 95% design, we are aware that when we put this out to bid, now that the scope is almost finalized, that it's going to come in, there are things that have been added to the scope because, and things that have changed when it comes to construction costs, that we think it's going to come in higher. At the same point, if we bid it out and it comes in lower by increasing the borrowing authorization, we haven't tied our hands elsewhere. If we were to, you know, the DBW Director trying to deliver a project has sort of offered up that water retain earnings can cover this $1 million and I think that that's true. I think that the right financial decision for the Town would be the increase to borrowing authorization. And then at a later date, as we get to that, once we have firm numbers from the bid process, if we don't feel comfortable borrowing at that level, then approach the decision to tap into retained earnings, CapEx, and have that flexibility. So that would be my recommendation.
Yeah, I think that's smart.
I currently have it reflected as water retain earnings because that is how Sean did the memo based on feedback that I gave him, so this is not, I'm just saying, we have flexibility. The best option in my mind is increasing borrowing authorization. I have that language from Bond Counsel, so I can give that to you to see. Stormwater management, I would just reiterate, this is going to be, this is us keeping up with the MS4 permit through the EPA. I currently have the highest dollar figure tied to this. From the quote that we've received in hand, it is a menu and what we need to do is make sure that we're getting everything we need to do to stay in compliance with the EPA. And this is the tip of the iceberg. When it comes to MS4, we are in the early stages of reporting to EPA, but when projects start to get demanded by EPA, we're going to have to have a funding mechanism in place. Article 13, Nine Green Street, we do have the quote, we know the cost. This is, we need to move forward on this. I will be providing the quote to you and the Finance Committee so everybody can be aware of it and people can ask questions on it. I think, you know, we cannot lose more time moving ahead with planning out how that is going to be taken care of. That building needs to be removed. Stormwater management on site needs to be handled. And then, you know, I think there was discussions had, the Nine Green Street Committee gave you a recommendation on what they'd like to see, which is use of green space and parking for the downtown area. If the chain, if there's a changing course from that from the Select Board, I'm all ears, but at this point, my main focus is getting the design and engineering to get that building knocked down and have the site sort of taken care of. Article four...
Real quick, what's the, what's the plan if we were to obtain the funding to remove the building? That Nine Green Street Committee is basically done. In terms of planning for the site after it's raised, I guess it's upon this Board to develop an idea of what that might be. Did the Nine Green Street Committee leave us with options of what was recommended?
Yeah, so if I may speak to that, the recommendation would be to consider forming a committee then for its reuse, reuse and development. So we got, that committee got as far as the recommendation that has this article here today and was disbanded. So the next step would be to consider forming a committee again. What never happened was, because we don't have the work that will be done funded by this article, we never had a public forum, a public way to get comments back as to, you know, what the community is looking for in terms of use. So if the Town continues to own that property, that's a very natural next step to have public input for the use of the space and that would take, I think, a committee to see that through.
In addition to that site, Travis, if that's, if that's what this Board directs after potentially a successful Town Meeting vote on that, I would throw 268 Woodland Street into the thinking for spring Town Meeting reuse and consideration. I don't know if we need a committee to determine what that property would be used for, but it presents as another opportunity for us to invest some funds and maybe make it a better recreational outlet or something along that line. So both of them sound like projects after a special Town Meeting. Sorry. Go ahead.
And so with this, you know, presuming we get design engineering costs approved at the, special Town Meeting, we would be in line by May to sort of have a plan in play, to have a plan to be presented for this. And if that involves rolling up a committee, we can certainly do that. The deliverable that was given by the Nine Green Street Committee, I can reshare with everybody and I can include in the discussion of this article, so everybody's aware of where they sort of settled on. And I think moving on 260 Woodland in the May timeframe certainly makes sense and I'll keep that on my radar. Article 14, signs and equipment by TAC. I provided quite a bit of update. Chief Stone, who's here, and Chief Cassidy both sit on TAC. Ms. Heinz sits on TAC as Sean Reese and a few civilians. This is a request that hits on a number of things. One of the things is that TAC, which we'll be discussing under Board Business, has been hearing residents who've gone through the submittal form. And some of those require some signage. These are for new signs, right there. They're sort of a new service level that has not previously been there. What's in the DPW budget is sort of replacing used and worn and broken signs. And this would be being able to deliver on what TAC has been put in place to do, one of the things TAC has been put in place to do. Additionally, equipment that I think is going to help in a lot of the data collection that we've seen, that we need when it comes to the Lowland discussions on sort of people want to know, you know, sort of what is the increase in traffic? What is the increase in large vehicle traffic and those types of things? A couple pieces of equipment are on here. I provided the quotes that the Chief Stone got. Some of those, because they count, they count specific information about the size of a vehicle, they count, you know, all types of different things and report back. They require software and cloud storage. And so within those quotes and within what I've provided to you are a couple options for either using, within the warrant article, we could pay for three months' worth of software and those types of things. Because it's a warrant article that doesn't sunset, we could, you know, pay the cost of that over time within the article while also obviously signs are within that article and we don't want that to sunset. So this is essentially a TAC vote that was taken and I put the vote, I put the date somewhere, but it was last Thursday, I believe, they voted to have this request on here and I've changed that and provided you with all the information and it's been provided to the Finance Committee as well. So if there's any change, any questions on that? That one did change with some more information since the last time we sat down. Any questions on that one? All right. Article 15, the traffic engineering study, I think, I put together some language based on the direction I was given by the Board previously. I think, you know, as Mr. Cronin said, we've now got some feedback, initial feedback from Mast dot. I think this could go in a lot of different directions and I'm, my pen is ready to hear how you'd like me to proceed here. I think the way that I sort of discussed this with the Finance Committee last week is that we get a lot of traffic, our traffic engineering done in this town by new development. When new developments come in through the planning process, we have those people provide the studies and provide the cost to peer review those studies. But in an area like the Lowland Industrial Park, where these businesses have been long established and there aren't a lot of needs or ability for them to come in front of the Planning Board for us to say, you know, we'd like some traffic studies, it is now on the Town if we need information to go out and get that information. And so this would be, in my mind, would speak to that, but I think, you know, there are other opportunities that Mr. Cronin may want to reference after our Mast dot call that could also be addressed in something like this.
Well, I do. I think this is, I hope Carol, Carol, you're still on the phone, that's great. This is the topic that you brought up earlier. It's trending that the Town is going to likely need its own traffic count when it submits any applications to Mast dot for consideration of revised commercial traffic flow. The area that this particular warrant currently targets is the Lowland Industrial Park area. However, since that emerged, we know, we've certainly taken notice of the concerns up in South Street, which is an area also visited yesterday by Mast dot folks. And then finally, we have the 555 Hopping Brook project that is, you know, looming and may have even more significant traffic impacts in our community. I would try to seek as broad an application of the traffic study purpose as possible. You know, talk with the Finance Committee about finding ways to potentially apply resources to these areas in the next six to 12 months. The studies themselves take time and obviously, you know, the Lowland Industrial piece, the South Street piece, we've got Mast dot's attention and I'd like to tackle those, you know, as soon as possible. But I can certainly envision Hopping Brook and some of the unintended consequences of traffic flow onto state roads could have an impact on areas that we don't currently see and a study would help us understand that. So I don't know what my colleagues think about this, but I'm thinking something a little bit more broad that gives us the flexibility to move the resource in the next six to 12 months to address these concerns as we work with Mast dot. What do you think, Ben?
I agree, but I think one of the things that, one of my concerns when we look at traffic, I mean, certainly Lowland Street is unique or like Hopping Brook, but, you know, as we talk about, you know, Central Street and Washington Street, my question is, are these trucks originating or ending up in Holliston or are they just passing through? And just sort of understanding, like, you know, are there, if, for example, you know, I hear a lot about, you know, we'd heard some people in the Lowland Street forum that we had talking about Washington Street and I mean, I certainly see it like where I'm living on Highland Street. Are those trucks going somewhere in Holliston? And if we're doing something to mitigate the traffic challenges in Lowland Street, are we potentially either obviously moving the problem or are there other additional challenges that we're sort of ignoring as we, as we look at some of these things with noise and things like that? So I just want to make sure that we're sort of capturing some of that, particularly on the main roads in town especially. So I would probably, I just want to make sure that we're at least looking at Washington Street, Summer Concord, you know, the main routes, to make sure that we're, we're seeing how those roads are being used. And, you know, to the South Street conversation, if the challenge is, you know, if an alternate route for people getting off 495 to get into Holliston, if it's Summer Street, what does that look like right now? You know, trying to have some understanding of like some of the other consequences that could be out there and seeing what that kind of scope would look like as a study. That's my personal opinion.
You're thinking broad as well.
Yeah, thinking broad, trying to sort of see how like, understand the challenges in the Town, I think in general beyond Lowland. Tina?
I would not make it specific to Lowland Industrial Park. I would keep it broader than that as well. I would not say study, I would say studies multiple. I think that $40,000 sounds great. That is certainly multiple traffic studies. That is also multiple consultation with an engineering firm. So I think that leaves plenty of room to perform certainly more than one, two, or even three traffic studies with the associated engineering consultation. even three traffic studies with the associated engineering consultation that would be needed. So I, like Ben and John, would say go broad on this one.
Yeah, I think, just to clarify on 40, right, that a traffic study really is, is going to, I mean, the scope needs to be in there, right? So I think the expectations, a count is not a study, a count is, is done within a study, right? So I, I think as long as we understand what we expect to get out of it, I can keep it broad in general for the areas that we want to cover, certainly within town. But what we expect to get out of that, and if it's, you know, sort of, we expect to use this information when pursuing a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion with Mast dot, that data, those counts, people understand the way those counts need to be done. A lot of these traffic engineering firms actually farm out or use a third party to do those counts. It's sort of specific work to that, but, you know, we're getting to, we, we need to know what those studies are answering, and if I have that, I don't need to know specific areas. Absolutely, we can keep it as broad as possible.
Can you just be a little more clear on what you mean by what the studies are answering? Because they're, they are pretty specific in what they ask for. It's count, it's volume, it's vehicle type, it's peak flow during peak hours, so, you know, you identify. So what more, I mean, do you mean the?
So, I mean, we do traffic engineering studies for designing, you know, new stoplights. We do all types of different traffic engineering studies, right? So I think if I understand.
Like intersection grade, you want that sort of thing? Like is it an A intersection or a B or?
Yep.
Okay.
So all of those things need to be considered. So if, if all we're looking for off the bat is, is providing counts, I think 40,000 will handle anything. I think if it's designing, for example, a light at Whitney and Washington, that's a much larger cost than what this is, and I just want the expectations to match that, that's all. I mean, the, the, the cost to design a light at an intersection like that is more in the $150,000 range.
One of the things that I, that I think we should acknowledge as a board, that we're starting here with a modest article to address what, what seems to be an imminent need for a couple of areas in town, but we're not out of this business after this is done.
Right.
I think one of the things that stood out from our experience with Mast dot yesterday, Travis, was how little the town of Holliston has, has really garnered from Mast dot resources in recent years. The road conditions, when you get out of your vehicle and you stare at Washington Street or Concord Street, and you can see the, the aprons degrading, drainage becoming a concern, lack of sidewalks again, we didn't even realize, I didn't realize there was a sidewalk on Washington Street until I got out and saw the.
Noticed it was pointed out to me.
The degraded asphalt that's under there. So those are the things that we can then, as, on the next level, look to try and achieve more access to state funding to improve those roadways, which are critical to our core infrastructure. To Ben's point, we know this, if we direct more commercial traffic onto the state numbered highways, they're going to get more use. We need to have a plan in place, and we know after hearing from Mast dot yesterday, that plan takes years to bear fruit in the form of improved drainage, improved design, roadway construction. We need to get in that game soon. But that's a, probably a spring faced solution after we learn more about, from our friends at Mast dot about the direction that they're thinking of going with some of the areas that we talked about yesterday.
No, and I think it, it speaks to one of the messages too, which is, you know, the more we bring to the table with Mast dot, the more opportunity we have for Mast dot to be able, to be prepared, to be in position to help us.
Yeah.
And I think that this speaks to that. So I will take this feedback and any further feedback and sort of re-situate this and bring it back to you.
Thank you. The last article appears to be a placeholder for the Town Hall septic easement.
Yes, I should have more information.
That's an item you're, you're still, second to last, actually, you've got 17 on here. That's a, under negotiation still?
Yes.
Nothing to report, right?
Nothing to report.
Okay. And then as a placeholder for anything the Governance Committee might come forth with for a special time meeting?
Yes, and I also, as I said, had, had received indication that there may be a citizen's petition, but I do not have that language. Everybody has until Thursday at 1, excuse me, Thursday at 4:00, and then we'll have to look at the scheduling of, of potentially opening the warrant back up.
Got it.
Real quick question, would you accept a petition, citizen's position, petition if the warrant is reopened?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other comments for the warrant from anyone on the Zoom call? Hey, Carol, how are you?
I'm doing good. Sorry to be a page.
No, long time, long time no hear.
I know, right?
I know.
I just want to make a couple of comments.
Go ahead.
Number one, when it comes to the water and the mains and sidewalks.
Yep.
What you might want to do is identify which streets are scenic streets because those, you do have to go to the Conservation Committee, you do have to have a lot of, it, it's a lot of work to try and take down a stone wall or to try and cut down a tree. There has to be a public hearing, it has to go through the Conservation Committee. So maybe when you're redoing the water lines, you might want to, like, look at which streets are labeled as scenic roads and, and schedule the time so that you have enough time to really put in the effort to put in the sidewalks. Because I, I heard your frustration on Winter Street, but if it is a scenic road, they really don't have a choice. There has to be a public hearing, there has to be the Conservation Committee, there has to be, the Planning Board has to be involved.
Well, sure, they have a choice. Carol, just to push back, sure, they have a choice. The choice is to go have those conversations, right?
Yeah.
That's all I was asking.
You know, I could say, you know, so, yes, I know why Bullard Streets are scenic roads. So when it comes time to have our water done, that's going to be the pushback.
Right.
Yeah. And then finally, I want to also state that I have seen a huge decrease in traffic recently. I don't know if it's because it's the end of the fiscal year for, for the state or not, or if, you know, due to COVID and due to funding, maybe some.
She's on mute. Do you want to say something about it?
Dying down.
They're all coming on my street.
But I think if you look at Lowland Street, you will see a huge decrease in what's going in and out of ABC. To answer the question, are these trucks like doing work in Holliston? No, they're not. I've followed them, they go out to Millis, they go out to 109.
Chief Stone, Chief Cassidy would never miss a chance to address.
They're just passing through Holliston to get to ABC, or they're passing through Holliston to get to the transfer station. Because I've spent days following them.
Whoa.
They think I'm crazy. So that's what the.
Be careful, Carol, be careful.
I know. I, well, I, you know, I'm, I'm just curious, and I need to know where they're coming from. And so I know they're not, they're not working in Holliston. But anyhow, I just wanted to put that out there, so if we do a road study, I'm not sure you're going to see the volume of traffic that we have been seeing during the summer.
Thank you. Dory Kildoff, you have your hand up. What's on your mind?
Yeah, so I'm just trying to understand this conversation that you're having about these different projects and the impact to your traffic study. So, so 555, I'm mostly interested on the, on the butter in Medway.
Okay.
And we have been on every call that mentions 555 because it has a huge impact on us.
Okay.
So I'm just trying to understand, when you talk about this traffic study, does that, you said six to 12 months, it's a long protracted, uh, traffic study. Does that happen while that's being developed? Does the developer have to be on hold until you do the traffic study? What are you proposing here? And I'm trying to understand the impact to these different developments.
Got it. Great question. So try to decouple 555 from the industri, from the other industrial park and neighborhood commercial vehicle issues that we've heard from already. So in other words, Lowland and South Street, we've heard from clearly are existing commercial vehicle impact zones. 555 has not come before this board yet officially as a bona fide project for us to put any, put our arms around, Dory. What it means though is that with this article, we'll be able to have the tool ready to perhaps do a study if we need to over the next six months before spring town meeting. We don't know what we'll need for 555. It is a, it is a, it is a development enigma to us. We're monitoring it through the Town Administrator with the Planning Board, the Zoning Board, and, and other mediums to make sure we see what's going on. But to be clear, we currently don't envision using a study to do a traffic study on a project that hasn't come before us. We want to have the resources available that when it does, we might be able to pull it off. Does that make sense to you?
It does and it doesn't because, are you familiar, I'm sure you're familiar with the MIPA letter that was written in May?
Yes.
And it referenced a traffic study, and they said, it, it mentioned in that, you know, that it was grossly, that the developer or whatever study that was done was grossly underestimated by five times.
That was, right. You're talking about the traffic study that the developer proposed, correct?
Exactly. So in that letter, what, what I think everybody has a really hard time, and I know you see it out on social media, and obviously, we're all concerned here in Medway for a lot of different reasons, but, you know, my, my difficulty with this whole thing and trying to understand how this work, again, I'm sorry that I don't understand the town, town politics.
No, it's okay.
And how this, okay, so.
We'll help you get there.
So, so the MIPA study, I referenced it, but when you read through this, not the MIPA, it's the MIPA letter, when you read through it and they reference the traffic study, when you get to the end of that letter, it basically said that basically they had to do several different things, but they go forward without having done those different actions that one had to do with the traffic. So I'm so confused as to what the town of Holliston wants done prior to this developer getting all his approvals to start building. I mean, you know that he, he cut trees back here, like, he is moving forward, and I'm trying to understand, what is the town of Holliston? What are you planning to do about this? Or are you just letting this move forward?
Well, to go back to my remarks, we are monitoring the site, we are, we are working, collaborating with, with our other committees and our boards to ensure compliance with existing conditions. I will notify you that the developer will be receiving a cease and desist letter from the town of Holliston tomorrow. Our town planner went up there today and observed some conditions which appear to be in violation of their current conditions. So we intend to protect our rights, but we also want to work with, you know, butters and the developer to understand what are they trying to do and how do we get them to, you know, utilize our existing bylaws and our existing rules and conditions to perhaps do business in Holliston the right way. So I don't have any plans right now to welcome them in. They have some things that they have to work on, but until and if they come before us, we're monitoring and protecting our rights.
I appreciate that. Thank you for sharing that information.
All right. I think we have another, I don't know Milligan's first name, so whoever you are, S. Milligan, you're next.
Great, hi, everybody. This is Scott Milligan.
Hi, Scott, how are you?
I'm well, thank you.
Your address, please, Scott?
Yep, I live on 98 South Street. And so I just did want to follow up on the other individual's comment in that the 555 is not a separate issue in that unfortunately, I, well, I work from home, which is fortunate, but unfortunately, from 5:00 AM to 7:00 AM, I see trucks carry loads of dirt from the development over in Hopping Brook. And it's been great to be able to ride my bike back there and see what's going on, but there's considerable traffic directly related to the activities there. So I, I share the concern of waiting six to 12 months where this, this construction in addition to increased traffic with semis, I can tell you firsthand, I witnessed it simply because I'm awake every morning from 5:00 to 7:00 facing South Street. So my, I guess my, my ask, and it sounds like our hands are a little bit tied with the Department of Transportation in that we can only do so much, but since South Street is a scenic, scenic road, I guess I'm still confused on how we can have so much traffic that's been increased, but, but not be able to somehow control that since it is a scenic road, since it does directly run up against wetlands, and it's also a very narrow road, which to me, it seems like we should have some, some ways at town to better control the flow of this, you know, these large semis, these very heavy trucks and so forth.
So South Street was discussed on our Zoom call with Mast dot. We'll give you some more details on this next week, Scott, but just to give you a primer, we did talk about the culvert, the wetlands, and some of the other potential barriers that, you know, should be considered for commercial traffic throughway. The, the impact really goes to surrounding communities. As you probably know, South Street joins Clark Street and Medway and dumps out onto 109. What Mast dot's encouraged us to do is to evaluate the traffic flow. If it were not to go down those streets, where does it go? That's what they care about. You can't just simply put up a sign and hope for the best. Mast dot wants the communities to help articulate alternative routes to the, to the ascent, if you will, of surrounding communities. That's what we're working on. And that is, that is ultimately the, the fix needed to address the concerns because other areas, like you talked about, wetlands, culverts, scenic roads, they're not perpetual fixes that will inhibit the kind of vehicular traffic, commercial traffic that's impacting your neighborhood. We feel like we've got a decent grip on what's ahead of us. We'll get into a little bit more detail next week, but I want to let you know that we have thought about it and we are talking in detailed terms with our friends at Mast dot about this and hope to bring in our surrounding communities in their interests quite soon. Scott, you there?
Yep, no, I look forward to hearing more. Thank you.
Any other questions this evening from our friends on Zoom? Okay. I'm sorry, did you have your hand up?
No, I, I was just going to add to, to the end of the, the warrant update discussion. At this point, I would say, you know, if, if you feel comfortable with any of them, we can sort of finalize them at this point too, since we have more time, I think, you know, presenting you with a, a sort of more finalized Word document by next week, I think, puts you in, in good position to give me any feedback and potentially move any of the ones forward that you're comfortable with.
Yep.
So I, I don't think we need to take any votes tonight unless you feel compelled.
No, I don't think so at this time. A little premature.
Absolutely.
All right, let's move on to our agenda to the next item, Holliston Economic Development Fund Creation.
Yes, this should be quick. I know we got some other things to cover. So this whole discussion comes back to a previous town meeting article that was approved. Some of the language, once it went through House Counsel, David Melly in Rep. Dykema's office sort of came back and said House Counsel had a couple of problems. They came back and said, we can't do a few of the things that the town was comfortable with. The Chair of the Select Board asked me to sort of reach a consensus with the number of groups that weighed in on this, including the EDC and the Finance Committee. And the change that I have here in green at the beginning of Section 4 is the town shall not appropriate funds to support the program. The Economic Development Committee, with the approval of the Select Board, may accept private gifts. So the fund essentially will, will be funded through private gifts and will allow the Economic Development Committee to answer some of, to address some of the blighted properties within town, which was the intent. And so this is sort of the language that, that came out of that. I think it makes, it sort of answers everybody's questions. What I have here in yellow is that they still had selectmen, so I just changed the Select Board, and I'll also capitalize that. But other than that, that's the only change, and what David Melly from Rep. Dykema's office is asking is that the Select Board vote this final language. They can file it, and then once the, we get that final response, the fund will be created, and the EDC will have that as a weapon at their disposal to attack blighted properties in town, have a little carrot rather than stick.
Any questions from the board on this hour?
I just, I was actually the one from the Finance Committee that worked with the EDC to put that language in because the Finance Committee had concerns about town funds being used for this program.
Tina, any thoughts?
Yeah, no, none.
Well, take, with the Select Board's approval of this change, that is, that is sufficient to make this happen because we've already, okay.
That's all, he just needs your vote on this total.
No town meeting approval at this point.
No.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to accept the edits for the Holliston Economic Development Fund Creation as proposed by Mr. Hart.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That carries. Thank you. Board Business, meeting minutes of August 24, 2020. I'll entertain a motion to approve those meeting minutes.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Looks like we have three Traffic Advisory Committee items. Ms. Hein, would you like to take over here?
Sure. So the Traffic Advisory Committee, as Travis had mentioned, met last week. We heard.
heard three petitions, that was the scheduled number, all three showed up, we met last week again to go over the recommendations that the committee was going to present to the Select Board. Of the three petitioners who had hearings, two have recommendations that are brought before the board tonight, one had a recommendation of no action at this time, certainly the, the warrant and the Town Meeting votes in what will be December now, we'll, we'll kick that back up again, but at this time, no recommendation for that third petitioner. So do you want me just to read them?
Please, yes.
All right, so for the first petitioner, 114 Juniper Road, Mr. Robert McGee, the Traffic Advisory Committee recommends a "Do Not Enter" sign on top of current signage, signage at both ends of Morgan Way, as well as Town Communication regarding emergency access routes. The, we can vote on them all together, or we can vote on them
So just to be clear, was that a unanimous vote by the tack on that?
Yes, it was, yes.
Okay. We will entertain a motion to approve the Traffic Advisory Committee signage from Morgan's Way, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That carries, next one, Tina?
Okay, the second recommendation out of the Traffic Advisory Committee is for 235 Mellon Street, brought forward by the petitioner, Ms. Hannah Roy. The recommendation is to remove the signage, move the signage, excuse me, to a more visible position on Winter Street and add the yellow diamond signage present elsewhere.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the requests for Winter Street by the Traffic Advisory Committee, so moved, do I have a second?
Second with the comment that is both Mellon and Winter Street that will see changes.
Thank you, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Last one, Tina?
All right, the third recommendation that is brought to the board tonight is on the implementation of Mass General Law Chapter 90, Section 17C. So we, as a town, the Town Meeting in Octo-, nope, May of 2019 voted to adopt Chapter 7, Section 17C, and it was left to the board to determine implementation. In May of 2019, we did not have a Traffic Advisory Committee. When the Traffic Advisory Committee was formed, one of the goals, one of the jobs, tasks, duties was to look at making a recommendation on implementation of 17C, and so the board discussed that at our meet, excuse me, the committee discussed that at our meeting on Thursday, and with a four to two vote, recommended townwide implementation of Section 17C.
What's the implication of that in terms of roadways? Because we have a variety of roadways that have different speed limits, including the state roads, obviously.
Correct.
Where does this apply and where does it doesn't, where it doesn't apply?
All right, so the facts are such that Holliston has about 265 roads within our boundaries, about 250 of those are not posted, so the remaining 15 to 17, it's actually 17 roads in Holliston, this includes Washington Street, this includes Concord Street, Central Street, Fisk Street, and so on, there are 17 roads that are posted. So as you're traveling around those roads, you will see speed limit signs of anywhere between 25 to 45, I think that's pretty much the range in the town of Holliston. Those are posted roads, 17 posted roads, those are the major roads, and those are the state numbered routes as well. And that carries, I would argue, the vast majority of the traffic through our town. The remaining 250 roads are primarily residential, zoned residential, we experience them as residential, these are where our families live, and those are the roads that are not posted. When a road is not posted, it falls under the statutory speed limit, which is 30 miles an hour unless a town adopts and implements 17C. That came out of the Municipal Modernization Act of 2017, so it's a relatively new creation. So again, we're talking about 250 roads in the town of Holliston that currently are 30 miles an hour, would go down to 25 miles an hour.
Now, we, I remember a while ago, we talked about 20 mile per hour impact zone, usually in school zones.
Correct.
Does this affect that?
No, because that is Section 18B, and I need to talk to the Chair about having a discussion at the Traffic Advisory Committee on implementation of, of 18B.
Got it.
That was not this part of this recommendation, so this wasn't.
The article from, which is Article 27 from May 6, 2019 Town Meeting, said the vote will, the town will vote to adopt the provisions of Mass General Law Chapter 90, Section 17C, and 18B to allow the Board of Selectmen at the time to set speed limits of 20 or 25. So the, the vote took 17C and 18B, what we're talking about tonight is just 17C.
Got it. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the Traffic Advisory Committee's proposed adoption of Chapter 90, Section 17C on townwide basis of 25 miles per hour?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second with a question, how is it, how is this communicated, that this, that this change is taking place?
That is a great question, and we talked about that at the Traffic Advisory Committee, and there are multiple ways. I will be clear in saying that we do not have to post speed limit signs, okay? So what will happen is, with some coordination with HPD and probably DPW as well, there will be message, those message trailers that are right now being used to advertise no flu clinic in the town, those will be posted as, whenever we have a notice to get, get out to the community at major points of entry into the town to notify people. We have other means in terms of Holliston Reporter, in terms of social media, we talked about a reverse 911 call, we did not make a decision on that, but that's an option as well, so there are multiple ways to message this to the community. I think what needs to happen, John, if we could just back up a little bit, is we, we need to talk about a date at which time this would go into effect on implementation.
Did that come up at your Traffic Advisory Committee?
It did not come up at our Traffic Advisory Committee meeting.
What are you recommending?
I was under the impression it would be effective upon the vote.
Yeah, the, um.
After, after Town Meeting, possibly? Because that would help us with the implementation.
Yeah, it's tied up a little bit, John, with the purchase of the equipment, right? So the messaging trailer, so we have two in use, we would look to use the new equipment.
You made the motion, he's got a second with a questions, if you want to amend your motion to propose a date
Okay, let's amend, yeah.
For when this vote would be effective, we can act on that.
Calendar year is a nice arbitrary deadline.
I will amend the motion to implement 17C townwide, townwide to include a start date of January 1, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That carries.
Thank you, John, for catching that.
Other business, Mr. Sparrow?
I have two things. The first is, is I've reached out to Liz Greendale, our Town Clerk, to talk about the upcoming election, things like security and how residents can interact with the voting process, and this is obviously, because it's a presidential election, it's a lot more interest, so we want to make sure that some residents who may not have, may not be aware of some of the other things that are happening in a COVID environment, what's going on, what's kind of security measures, and what kinds of things she's doing. So I do have one question for you both, is there anything in particular you'd like Liz to address in, in that she would have an agenda item in next week's?
The other thing I think, you know, mail-in voting would be a big part, that's a change this year, so a reminder to voters of how to participate in that program.
Yep.
With respect to Voting Day, I don't have any concerns, she's done this before, we've, we'll, we'll probably see in excess of 90% turnout, either electronically or early, through early voting or in person, so this is not the first time she's encountered that. I suspect that with, with the pandemic being what it is, we've had enough experience that I, I don't have any advice for her, really, I think she's got it covered.
Yeah, you just wanted, if she had any particular topics that she thinks that she should address?
Ben, to your point earlier, during your public comment about First Amendment rights, I think that any message from anyone in town government to hold peaceful, to move through the election period peacefully and respectfully, I think is, is important, so if she wants to message that out, I think that would be great for the community to hear. Okay.
And my second thing is, is that I am working on a, a narrative for Q1 for the Select Board, for us. I, I think it's important for us to have sort of a messaging of what we've done and our priorities within that.
I'm sorry, I got confused, you don't mean the fiscal reporting, you mean for the Holliston Reporter?
I mean, like, what we've done as a board.
Yes, great, okay.
So just like what we've done as a board, just like looking at, like, you know, what are our accomplishments, then what are the priorities, what are the things we've done? So I'm putting together just as a narrative, what's going, what, what I've seen, and hopefully later this week, I'll send it off to, I'll send it to Travis, who can publish it to you too, to see what you think, and then
Great, thank you for doing that, Ben.
Work on publishing that in the next couple of weeks.
That's awesome, thank you. I have no other business, thank you.
I have one item, folks, about a week ago, the so-called Bouncing Rock fell from its precipice up off of Washington Street. It garnered a fair amount of local interest, as well as media interest. One thing I just want to let folks know, we actually asked Holliston PD to look into the event to ensure there wasn't any foul play involved. A Holliston police officer responded and inspected the site, looked for any cameras locally that would have offered insight on, on that, and they examined the site to see if there was any evidence of foul play, none was found, so the conclusion remains, it was an act of God, an act of nature, whatever you want to call it, the rest is now history, and that private property owner can figure out what happens next. We remain open and listening to them if they have any ideas, but it was a point of high interest a week ago.
I think George Washington loosened it.
Yeah, it's 2020, man. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at this point.
We are not adjourning, we are going to executive session with a roll call vote.
So we are adjourning to executive session at this point, I'll entertain a motion to do so. For the purposes of
We will not be returning.
We will not be returning, of course, this will be reason number three to hear grievances associated with collective bargaining.
So I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session without, with no return.
With no return.
We'll not be returning to open session.
I second that.
All is in favor by poll, Mr. Sparrow?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Heim? Ms. Cronin, aye. Thank you very much, Holliston, for joining us this evening, we'll catch you next week. Have a great night.